let me know, but the meeting is yours. So I'll just turn it over to you. Thank you.
Sounds good. I'm just getting into the agenda as well. All right, now I am all ready. So we are um at our Education and Policy Committee meeting. We are going to try to stay a little bit shorter tonight due to our meeting this evening at 6:30 for the whole board. Um, so just wanted to go through, there are a couple of agenda items that I was um pass over to Dr. Stoker to start with the High School Program of Studies and any changes.
Thank you. Um, is that big enough for everybody to see the agenda this evening? I'm trying to work off of two windows here.
It's good for me.
Yes. Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and click on the first link is the High School Program of Study that has all of the changes directly in there in yellow. And then if you want to follow along that um separate changes sheet has those um changes which are very minimal for this evening listed out. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and present this. And then Mr. Hauser is going to take us through that. Can you see the um agenda at this or the Program of Studies?
Yes, we can.
All right. All right, Mr. Hauser, if you want to go ahead and present those changes.
Thank you, Dr. Stoker. Good evening, everybody. Um, Mr. Vlacity unfortunately cannot be here tonight. He does send his regards uh to the entire group. Uh, again, the changes for this year were fairly minimal. Um, it begins on page number seven. We added a description of Act 136 of 2020. I know that's been brought up at prior uh policy meetings and other committee meetings. This is the pandemic-related Keystone Exam Exceptions uh and the graduation changes. Um, the PDE did outline a a new pathways to graduation plan, but some of that had to be delayed or postponed. Um, and so Act 136 was passed and we put a description of that language right into the Program of Studies so that everyone uh could definitely see that. Uh, the next change is in the Arts Department um down on page 26. We are removing the course, technically revising the course. We're removing Graphic Arts. Um, and then we are replacing that with two new courses. We're kind of expanding the offering a bit and using more technology when it comes to digital arts and photography. So on page 26, we simply removed graphics art, graphic arts as an option. And on page 27, we have added Digital Arts and Photography I as a new course with the course description there uh for your review. And then on page 28, we've added Digital Arts and Photography II as a new course. And again, trying to synthesize the arts with more technology, with more technology resources, uh, cameras, Photoshop, other software, uh, things of that nature, digital media, uh, things of that nature. Uh, that is all the the revisions that we have proposed here at the high school for next year's Program of Studies. Uh, we are talking about several other things within the building that we're looking at implementing uh potentially for for following year. And we've been talking about GPA calculations and weighted GPAs. That's all forthcoming. Uh, so again, pretty minimal. And I'll pick any questions about uh any changes at this time.
Thanks for the update, Mr. Hauser. I do have a quick question. This is Gil. Um, just questioning in regards to the the courses on that. Are any of our courses similar to what something like an LCTI would be promoting? And is is there a kind of a shared resource that we can use for some of those? Uh, with with minimal class, just questioning how many students are in some of those classes and the options that are out there? Is LCTI something that we could have our students attend and still be able to provide different levels of studies that are different than what LCTI would?
Well, we do have some LCTI offerings um that are that are that are very similar. Um, also including some LTRIC offerings as well, you know, some some dual enrollment art that's out there. I'm not going to say there's no overlap and everything in the Digital Arts and Photography courses is entirely unique. Um, I I do think it is more than different enough to to, you know, be as a standalone course. And these courses were designed specifically with uh looking at the enrollment in graphics art, graphic arts class, and then talking to students as to why that enrollment was down, and then what we could do to polish that up to to garner more interest. The photography element uh was something that came back as hugely popular amongst the students that we did talk to and did survey. So that'll go a little bit, uh, not quite as in-depth as our Photoshop course that we've added this year, uh, when it comes to just, you know, digital photography manipulation. Uh, but it'll also, you know, actually include using the camera angles, uh, things that, you know, content that professional photographers will use. So I I'm not going to say it's entirely similar to like an LCTI or an LTRIC, but it may spark some interest in those courses as well. Uh, and that's kind of what we're hoping for, potentially looking at this as a possible career path for kids, get them to explore this this idea and see what they can do with it.
Great, thank you. I think that's important that we can utilize all our resources out there, especially in a in a changing, unique world that's out there and how we're servicing our students and what we're doing to provide them as many options as we can. So glad we're still looking at utilizing LCTI and LTRIC in those aspects.
I would just add to that, um, there is one other course in here, the Yearbook course, which has typically been offered in the Art Department that is moving to the English Department, um, just because of staffing changes and where that may fit um for next year. So that's something that we're we're looking at as well. Hearing no additional questions, um, do we have the permission of the board members that are present in the committee meeting this evening to move this to the board for a um approval next week?
Yes.
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 Sounds like you may move it to a board meeting approval for next week.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Link for the calendar presentation. Do you want to present or do you want me to present it?
Um, I will share it.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Stoker. So if we had to use all those traditional school days, the last student day would be June 15th, each one that we do not have to use would fall off. So for example, this school year, um, right now, our tentative last day of school is June 11th, because we did have to use one traditional school day. Um, but going into the winter, it would have been um June 17th. Doesn't look like we're going to have to be in session until June 17th. In fact, if you check the long-range forecast, I'm cautiously optimistic in saying that we may not have to use another traditional snow day uh this school year. Um, fingers crossed. Uh, we have flex days built in again for where our staff can accumulate professional development hours up, kind of leading up to those target dates. The flex days would be November 24th, December 23rd, and June 16th. Uh, other than that, the holidays just in professional development days just kind of roll forward a year, uh, transposed onto the new uh calendar.
Mr. Link, this is Mrs. Martino.
Yes.
If the if the extra days are not used at the end, where is graduation for the seniors?
Okay.
Is it the 10th or the 17th?
Um, well, it depends. We usually make the graduation decision, um, I'm going to say like early April to mid-April. We we move the lock-in date there. Uh, that's what we'll be doing. That's what we will be doing this school year. Um, we try to, if it's all at possible, um, you know, try to have it on typically like a Friday evening. Um, I'm hopeful that we can have, that we that we would not have to break it into two sessions again, uh, like we did last year. Uh, it's too early to tell that yet. It's too early to lock in the date, and it's too early to tell if we'll be able to have everybody kind of into the stadium uh with with whatever uh requirements are still in place. Um, some of you may have seen that the governor uh just lifted the travel uh restrictions today and also adjusted indoor and uh outside occupancy limits slightly. Um, so let's, you know, hope that, let's hope that continues to trend for events like this.
Thank you.
Sure. So I guess I guess that was a long way of saying stand by. We haven't made the decision yet.
I have a quick comment, Matt, to Bob Kern.
Sure.
You know, we're looking at um traditional snow days, but with all the technology and and the things that we've been through, and I'm talking next year, of course, you know, I would I would hope to say, and 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 with all the training that our staff has gone through, that even on the snow days, we could kind of do what we've been doing with digital learning and virtual learning um at home in the same respect on a inclement weather day, you know, thus preserving those at the end of the year. Just my thoughts, um, just to keep, you know, the education process going. If the winter's as bad next year as it was this past year, you know, it might be a way to kind of circumvent those days.
Um, personally, I agree with you, uh, Mr. Kern. And um, when PDE puts out their their FID application again, their Flexible Instructional Day application, um, you know, we'll be sure to review that and submit as well. And it now that limits the amount of days um that we can do it. So hopefully it would not be another winter like we're coming out of right now. I will plant a seed that, uh, based on what you're just saying, Mr. Kern, you're going to see the request for an additional snowplow blade Wednesday evening. So just float that out there now. Um.
We don't need it if we go virtual. We don't need it, so.
We still have a lot of property to clear.
Yep.
So.
Of course, I'm jesting.
No. And and, you know, I'll take an opportunity to give kudos to our Buildings and Grounds Committee this year because they, you know, their goal was always to be able to have the children in safely and get the lots and sidewalks cleared. Um, sometimes it just wasn't practical with the amount of snow that we had. Any other questions on the proposed calendar?
Mr. Link?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question. Uh, we had, you and I had talked briefly about this uh earlier. Uh, the order that snow days is used. I can't, uh, your, the document's so small on my screen, I can't tell. Was there any discussion or changes to the order of first snow day makeup, second snow day makeup? You know, the the way it was set up now, we could have used the snow day, I believe, for President's Holiday and, but that wasn't the order.
Correct. So right now, it would still be the 18th and the 21st would be um President's Day Weekend Holiday. So it would be a Friday-Monday combination again. Um, and one of the reasons why we're not looking to swap that now is because this aligns then really with pretty much all the sending districts to LCTI, so we wouldn't be shortchanging. So in other words, we don't want to shortchange our students attending LCTI if we are closed and they're still open on the hours that they require. Um, so we're, you know, there's some things that we're trying to do to make sure that we have students that need to hit certain hour requirements for their um certifications that they're working towards. So that that was uh kind of the the broader discussion there, Mr. Weber. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then I'll ask the same question as Dr. Stoker. Are the board members this evening comfortable with us putting this on the March 8th Board Agenda for Approval? Or for consideration?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, those are our two Education Policy Committee Agenda Items this evening. Um, is there anything that anyone else would like to bring forth, bring forth before we close this meeting and transition into the ECC Committee Meeting? Okay, hearing nothing, then. Um, Mrs. Susak, I'll turn it over to you to close the meeting.
Sounds good. Now that you just have a blizzard coming our way. Thanks, Mr. Link. Um, that's what happens, right? We say we're not going to have it, and we're going to have a blizzard next week. But thank you, everybody, for your time. Uh, we will go ahead and close the Education and Policy Meeting at this time, and we will move into our Extra and Co-Curricular Meeting again. Um, and I apologize, I didn't mention it during the first time, but this committee is also being recorded and posted on the YouTube channel if anybody wishes to follow up on that. So I do apologize for not mentioning that at the start of our first meeting. Um, but going into what our Extra and Co-Curricular Agenda has on the evening tonight, um, there is an upcoming PIAA meeting, and I don't know if Mr. Geist has any information that he would like to share in regards to that.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Susak. Uh, just kind of give everybody a little bit of an update. Um, we are um, we are finalizing our winter season and on uh tomorrow, we're having a Colonial League uh full member, which is our Principals Athletic Directors, we're meeting tomorrow to kind of finalize our winter meeting, our winter season, rather. And the PIAA Health Committee is meeting tomorrow, and they're going to be giving recommendations. And as Mr. Link said in the last meeting, the governor came out with some new new guidance in regards to outdoor uh gatherings. So that's kind of like what we're looking at here for the spring. So kind of give you a timeline. Uh, tomorrow Colonial League Full Member, which is Principals Athletic Directors, are going to meet to meet to mop up the the league winter season. And then Wednesday, the PIAA is going to meet to discuss the spring season and kind of mop up their winter season and how progress it's going on there. Get recommendations from their Health and Safety Board or Committee that's going to meet tomorrow. And then Thursday, Athletic Directors from the Colonial League are going to meet to come up with uh spring sports plans. So as Athletic Directors, we did not want to come out with a plan until we got state guidance, especially from our health partners. So that's kind of the timeline. That's what we're looking at. Spring sports start one week from today. So we want to be able to give all of our coaches, uh, as well as all of our officials, an idea on how we should handle the spring sports season.
Thanks, Mr. Geist. I do have one quick question. Um, had noticed and talked to a few other uh surrounding districts, and just curious, on a um athlete return to sports, has there been anything driven by St. Luke's to um how to bring students back who may have had the COVID virus? Any kind of guidance around when they're allowed to start playing and not playing? I know there's been some discussion out there, so just curious what you may have heard.
Yeah, there there is on each individual, and it's by each individual uh student based on the severity of the illness. So without getting into too much detail, there is some information out there that we received from St. Luke's that there may possibly be some cardiac issues that go along with uh with the virus. So the other information is that that also pertains to anytime you get a flu or any other virus, uh, it's kind of like, hey, take it easy and ease your way back kind of back in. So each doctor or provider would give that information to each individual and our athletic trainers on on their return to play. So that's more of an individual on an individual basis, but also giving everybody a heads up like, hey, there there might be some complications or some things to ease back each individual student. So that again is with with the student, the parent, and the individual provider.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's our agenda for this evening, Mrs. Susak.
Thank you. I was just going to say, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Geist or any questions in regards to the upcoming PIAA meeting or?
Yeah, this is Bob. This is a logistic item. Um, I think I'm supposed to be on this committee officially, and my name's not listed in the agenda, just just so you know. But I have no questions for Mr. Geist.
And we will correct that, Mr. Kern. Thank you.
Thank you.
We love seeing you every first Monday, Mr. Kern.
Mr. Kern, you are on the top of the agenda. Your name is on there.
I thought it was too, but I wasn't sure anymore.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on the ECC Committee.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
But we'll we'll uh we'll be sure to reformat that.
Not a big deal.
I apologize.
Okay, um, that's it for the two committees, Mrs. Susak.
Sounds good. The next ECC um extra co-curricular will be held, unfortunately not till May 3rd. Um, it will follow our Education and Policy Meeting, but we will have our Education Policy Meeting um in April. So that meeting will be April 5th. Is that right? It wasn't on the agenda that I remember, but just wanted to make sure this team knew. And then uh extra co-curricular will be the May 3rd.
Yeah, and uh East um Ed Policy, it looks like it'll be April 6th because of the spring break.
Because of the holiday. Yep. That's what I wasn't sure on. I couldn't remember. Can't remember all the dates anymore. They all run together. All right, anyone have any other questions? If not, we'll give you guys a a little bit back unless, Mr. Link, you have a little bit more to discuss this stuff.
I was just going to say, uh, just, you know, feel free to log out and log back in closer to 6:30. Um, if you are going to remain on, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Hill, it wouldn't be recording yet. Um, and would you recommend that everybody mute their mics or what's your recommendation for that?
Uh, yeah, yes, uh, just mute your mic, and uh I would also turn off your video if you're going to stay connected.
That's what I was going to ask that question, because if I don't have to log out, I won't, but I would if you wanted me to. But if we could just turn off our our mics and our video and just stay on, uh, that'd be that'd be great. But if we could just turn off our mics and our video and just stay on, that'd be great.
Give us another minute and then we will begin our meeting.
Those from the public that are participating, please leave your microphone muted until we address you to go ahead and speak to the board. If you are on a computer or a mobile device, there is a microphone button down at the bottom of your screen. If you click that button, that will unmute you. If you are on a telephone, you press star six to unmute yourself. But please stay muted until the board asks for you to address the board. Thank you. And Mr. Fedorcha, the public, we had approximately about half the people joined that signed up. So there may be a few more joining, but approximately half of them joined.
Then I'm going to, I'm going to welcome everyone. Thank everyone for joining us this evening. This is a unique situation for all of us to be in as far as zooming. It's going to be an interesting way to do this. So I would now officially like to open the Northern Lee High School District School Board meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. The recording is posted on the Northern Lee High School District Media YouTube channel. All votes this evening will be roll call votes. A reminder to school board members to please state your name when making a motion and seconding a motion. I will now ask everyone in their own way to please do their pledge to the allegiance to our flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. I'm sorry, my throat got kind of. Mrs. Husak, are you prepared to do roll call?
Yes, I am, sir.
Mr. Dessler?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Husak? Here. Mr. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Ms. Culp?
Here.
Ms. Martineau?
Here.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, noting that public comment is restricted to those items on the agenda as per our policy. The agenda items are there for you and we will address you accordingly with on those on that item. As part of the Board Policy 903, all registered participants will be provided a period of five minutes for each public presentation. All statements will be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address any questions to any individual board members. Participants will be muted till their turn to speak. Mr. Hill will be announcing the name of the participant prior to their speaking. Mrs. Wagner will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining to your time. And then the audience, the announcement had time of it's going to expire for your speech. We ask also kindly that you mute yourself when you're not speaking so that we give the courtesy to those who are speaking at any time. Mr. Phil, we will now proceed with the participants.
Okay, the first participant on the list, I do not see. I will call the name just in case. Rachel Artenian. I did not see Rachel join. If you join, please unmute yourself now. Yeah, I do not think Rachel is with us. The next participant is Justin Jackowitz.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Justin Jackowitz. I live at 6465 Woodbury Drive in Slanton, Pennsylvania. I would like to start by saying that not in a million years would I have thought I would be speaking at a school board meeting advocating for my kids for in-person instruction. This is how far we've fallen in nearly a year's time. COVID-19 has exposed a lack of leadership in our school system. I wish I could begin on a more positive note, but the reality is that we failed our children for nearly a year. Yes, on Saturday, it will be a year. This meeting should have happened sooner. This is the first school board meeting since COVID-19 that we were able to actually speak and voice our opinions as we have been censored and silenced while our children are kept on the hybrid schedule. Our voices. How was almost every other school board able to have verbal comment from the public? I just listened to Allentown School Board meeting from last week and they had multiple meetings that they were able to have public comment as well. We should be doing the same thing so our voices can be heard. As I mentioned, the newspaper article in the Times News, we pay taxes for face-to-face in-person instruction and not cyber education or the hybrid model that we're currently engaged in. I have reached out to the leadership of the Northern Lee High School District, as many other parents have received responses that due to the CDC and Department of Health guidelines, they are sticking with the hybrid model. These are merely recommendations and when stated, when feasible, when possible. These are not state laws. That comes directly from a special education lawyer. Although in the fall, our leadership chose to defy the same guidelines and allowed for sports to resume when Governor Wolf recommended against them. We chose to say, okay, we're going to participate in sports. Governor Wolf said not until January 1st, but we said that's okay, but we're not doing the same with our in-person instruction. Are sports more important than education? I come from a sports background. I agree with what you did. I also want you to do the same for in-person instruction for every day of the week. The CDC and PA Department of Health and Education always have recommendations, but are rarely followed religiously like with COVID-19. Again, even when the terms are when feasible and when possible. We need to use common sense. We need to do whatever it takes to get our kids in school for five days a week. We have also arbitrarily chosen students with IEPs who are able to attend school for four days a week while other students are not. What justifies this? Are these students less susceptible to COVID-19? Seems to be working for them if they're in for four days a week also. The decisions being made, not just at this level, but the whole COVID-19 are through one single lens, the COVID-19 lens. Other important areas that we know, such as mental health, physical health and socialization are completely neglected by these decisions. We need to take into consideration the impact of not having in-person instruction and what it has done to our children. The fact of the matter is COVID-19, the virus is 99% survivable. And we know much more about the transmission than we did in March or April with all signs leading to reopening schools. This is from the CDC. This is from the World Health Organization and now even from the Biden administration as well. How are other local school districts like Catasauqua, Tomacua, Salkin Valley, Panther Valley, and especially local Catholic schools be able to open full-time or even four days a week? What is holding us back? Other states have been maskless and open for in-person instruction since September and are not worse or better off than we are. I ask the leadership to return to full in-person instruction. And how, how can we do that? But Catholic schools are able to do that with limited resources and they're able to make it happen. We need to do the same. Other local schools such as Whitehall, Coplay, Northampton and many others are also listening to their parents and beginning to open the doors. Northern Lee High needs to do the same. I can go on and on, but the plan is simple. Open the school for those families who wish for their children to attend face-to-face instruction. Even have them sign a waiver if necessary, so the school is not held liable if someone claims they contracted COVID at school. If families who do not wish to attend in person could attend Bulldog Academy, they can still get the live stream of classes like we've been doing. I asked that the leadership look in the mirror this evening and ask if they are doing what is best for students? And are they doing all they can to get our students back in school where everybody knows they belong for in-person instruction? Just today, in addition to weeks and months, the PA Department of Education says.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, the PA Department of Education says reopening schools is a local decision. That means it's up to you guys to make the decision. It's not up to the state to do that. You are our elected leaders for the children. Please make sure you're making decisions to get our kids back in school for in-person instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Melanie Nonamaker. Again, please say your name and your home address when you start. Thank you.
Ms. Nonamaker, are you available?
Melanie's on the call. Melanie, if you're trying to speak, please unmute yourself. Okay, I see Melanie on the call, but we can't hear you, Melanie, if you're trying to speak. So let's skip to the next one. The next person on the list is Pauline Grady.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Link and the Northern Lee High School Board. I would like to first start off by saying thank you for finally having a meeting where we as parents can talk about what has been concerning us for almost a year now. I sincerely hope this meeting isn't to just listen to us talk and then to tell us there is nothing you can do. We collectively as a group of parents are looking for action. We are looking for a plan for our kids to get back to school as soon as possible. This is achievable and honestly, if you say it isn't or you can't, we want solid evidence as to why it is not. As I have stated before, there are numerous schools returning in our area. There are schools locally that have been going five days a week since the fall. There are other states in our country that haven't missed a beat. Not one day since school has started in the fall. Statistics show our kids are regressing. The failure rate is at an all-time high. And to make matters worse, the school and teachers are calling children out for their, that they are failing, sometimes in emails and letters. The school board and the administration have handled this as poorly as any school district possibly can. You had a plan for all kids to come back to school in the fall. Guidance changed and you went to what I would consider the sloppiest Plan B that there can be. Plan B clearly wasn't working, so you made an addendum to Plan B by adding live streaming months into the school year. Returning to school was to be revisited around November. There was no revisiting, only deciding. Deciding without parent input, without student input, just input from all of you, the board and the administration. I would briefly like to go back to the word guidance. The information that the Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Department of Health is just that, guidance, not mandate guidance. You all realize that you have the ability to have these kids return to school. You choose to be driven by whatever decisions from whomever, whether it's the Department of Health, the union, I don't know. But that, I don't know where your decisions are coming from. You keep talking about safety and well-being. Well, the safety and well-being of the students in our district has gone by the wayside. The mental, emotional and educational health of these students has taken a nosedive. Children that have never had mental health issues are depressed and anxious. Children who have been at the top of their class academically are now struggling to keep their heads above water. I don't want to hear about COVID precautions. It's a moot point when I drive past the local bingo hall and see our most vulnerable population sitting shoulder to shoulder playing bingo when our kids can't have a normal unmasked recess outside. Don't tell me about COVID precautions when we are able to go into a restaurant and enjoy a meal with our family. But our kids can't even turn to talk to their friends during lunch or they get yelled at. Planes are packed with passengers, but our kids can't sit with their friends on the school bus. Our kids have become the sacrificial lamb during this entire COVID situation. You as a district are holding parents and children hostage when you don't put all choices on the table. You are the only ones in control and that is unacceptable. You have forced parents to take action and we will not stop until the families that want our kids back in school or back in school. Excuse me. A generation of kids will struggle with subpar education, mental health issues and emotional trauma. They're going to be known as the COVID generation, the COVID kids. The silver lining out of all of this is that they will see their parents fighting for what's right and not taking over an answer. Moving forward, parents want a seat at the table from here on out. Whether it's forming a coalition or having, somehow having parents on the school board, like you do have students on the board for meetings, whatever way, we want a seat at the table. It's time for a change. Sorry, I'm sorry, what?
Ms. Grady, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's time for a change. Public education has been on its last leg for years. It took a pandemic to really put it in the spotlight. You guys need to do better and get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. The next person on the list is Mark Benz. Again, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you for the time this evening. There's been one second. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. My name is Mark Benz. Address is 4335 Still Court in Slantton. And I come to you this evening as the parent of a kindergarten student and a second grade student at Peters. I do want to start this explanation by commending the job of the building principal, Mr. Schneider Wright, and the teachers that my daughter had in first grade and now second grade and kindergarten for the job that they have done under very difficult circumstances. We thank them eternally for making this in any way bearable for our kids. I also want to state that we come to this as someone that's been relatively supportive of the district throughout this time. You obviously were dealt a difficult hand last year and handled it about as well as possible in the last spring. This summer, it was a disappointment when they weren't able to come back five days a week. But we worked with you and we've worked with you for over a year to get to where we are today. Last summer, we had a difficult decision to make involving my kindergarten son, who thrived at his public, at his private school for pre-K and preschool. The difficult decision that we had was weighing the five-day alternative against what we were hoping would be a five-day at some point this year at Peters. Because of my daughter and not wanting to pull her out of school as a child that absolutely positively loves school and let me tell you now absolutely hates snow because of what it's done to this year, we could not make that decision for my son. And thus we enrolled him at Peters with, with my daughter so that they were both getting the same type of education and they wouldn't become resentful of each other in our own house. It's difficult to look back at that and see that that was the right decision for my son. And his teacher has been phenomenal and I will speak all the good things about what she has done this year. But he has definitely taken a step back and is, has not progressed to where he was a year ago when the world shut down. As I look through the local media and looking at the list of schools, I just simply question why we have been unable to get back to either a four to five-day in-person session, whereas majority of the colonial league plus smaller, what you would consider larger schools such as Whitehall, Northampton and Nazareth have been able to do. And we've been lacking on a plan. We come to you tonight seeking help and seeking help to get a plan in place to get our kids back in school. They have taken a step back. They have taken a step back socially. They have certainly taken a step back academically. My children love school. It is a disappointment to them every day and as kids at the beginning of the alphabet, their week starts off great when they can go to school for two days and then they have to face three days of disappointment as they're learning virtually the rest of the week. I understand that this winter has been beyond horrendous, the worst winter we probably had in a decade. But that has, in the days missed and the weeks that kids are going without being in the building, they're not even getting the two days that they were promised. I realize there's simply nothing that anyone on this call can do about the weather. However, it has made this situation even worse unintentionally. Our students are suffering. Our students are having a hard time understanding why they can't be there every year. My daughter, who's in second grade, will have, depending on what happens the rest of this year, will have missed basically half of her, her time at Peters. My kindergarten student has obviously not been in the building for five days a week since we started. We come to you tonight asking for a voice, a voice that's been lacking this entire time from the parents and from the community to be able to find a way to come together and make things as safe as possible. And look, safety is, is the utmost importance. But as was referred to earlier on this call, we're only looking at one end of that safety and one end of health.
Mr. Benz, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. And we're not looking at the emotional side of things. And I would bet that if we're looking strictly at academics and raising it, they're talking in a box slide as well. I thank you for the time. I thank you for putting this meeting together tonight. And I do want to close once again by thanking my students' principal and their teachers for what they have been able to do during this time, but we, we ask you tonight for more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up is Eric King.
Am I up on the screen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. It's 336 First Street, Slantton, by the way, before we start. Thanks for having this meeting tonight and opening up a two-way discussion for the parents to voice their concerns for our children in the district. Over the last 11 months, we've been faced with and overcome with many new and unique challenges in our personal lives and our professional lives. 12 months ago, we closed our schools and told our childrens to stay home for the safety of everyone in the community. At the time, this was a new virus and we had no idea of what we are dealing with. At the end of August last year, our board members were faced with a difficult decision of how to proceed with opening our district. If I remember correctly, this decision was made only two weeks before the scheduled start of the first semester. Numerous times through the fall, parents have requested that you send out a survey to the parents asking if, given the option, would you send your kids back full-time? Each time this was brought up, we were told that this would be too difficult to establish. We continued our so-called hybrid model through the holiday season while you prematurely closed the district for over a month. During our January meeting, it was brought up, new guidelines were out from the state and the CDC that recommended children be back in the buildings. Mr. Link at the time said that he was waiting to see what other districts were doing and would not allow, would not have any more decisions until after superintendent meeting. It was at this time that other districts like Salisbury opened their doors for the first time all year. Shortly after this, you finally agreed to send out a survey to the parents to see how many parents would be interested in sending their children back to the buildings full-time. During our last meeting, you told us that those results would not be gone over until March. If those numbers are not going to be discussed until March, that would mean we are looking at a few weeks for a plan to be formed and the buildings to be opened till, at the earliest, the beginning of April. Our children could not finally start to return to normalcy until sometime in April. For almost six months into this school year, no one wants to make the decisions on their own and take any responsibility for the decision. Every time we ask the board or Mr. Link questions, we've been told we are waiting to see what others are doing. If a student gave that answer to a teacher, they would be given a failing grade for any assignment. Our students are asked every day to show their work for their assignments. Why are you not willing to show us what evidence you are using to make your decisions? The actual science in the schools all over the country is some districts have been open since, since September with little to no evidence that is causing any community spread in the districts. We ask that you please open our districts for our children, allow them to get back to normal operations. Many children are suffering at home and cannot continue to do this on a regular basis. At this point, I don't really have a whole lot more to say. I'd like to finish this a little bit stronger, but as a parent, I'm going to behave. We do want our children back in school. We need you, the board members and the superintendent to finally make the decision to allow our children to be back in the district. If you guys can't make that decision, we need to find new board members that can make that decision and start taking the responsibility for what we elected you to do. Thank you for your time and letting us speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is Tim Weber. Tim, would you like to say some words?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Northern Lee High School Board for allowing me to speak as the Northern Lee High Education Association President. I would first like to thank the Northern Lee High School Board, District Administration, parents, district support staff, aides and teachers for working together to make sure our students get the best possible education under these extreme circumstances. This pandemic is real. Over half a million individuals in the United States who have tested positive with COVID-19 have lost their lives. We cannot ignore the dangers of contracting COVID-19. Since before the start of the 2020-21 school year, the Northern Lee High Education Association has been focused on the safe return to school for our students and staff. We have remained steadfast in our commitment to adherence to the guidance of the Centers for Disease Control and Department of Health by proper masking, social distancing and cleaning protocols to ensure the safety of all who enter or interact within our schools, our district transportation and our facilities. While the school year has brought many challenges and changes, our dedication has not wavered. It has also been the commitment of the Northern Lee High School District Administration and Board of Education to make decisions based upon the science and the advice of medical experts. experts. Safety guidelines have been established and reinforced. Learning models that allow for social distancing have been adopted. Additional methods for keeping our buildings clean have included equipment purchases for deep cleaning, new air filtration systems and Deep Cleaning Wednesdays. On behalf of the Northern Lee High Education Association, I would like to thank the school board for realizing that this pandemic is real and acting in ways that would keep our children and staff safe while they are in district facilities. Only because of wise decisions of the school board was the Northern Lee High School District able to continue to provide uninterrupted education for all our children. The Northern Lee High Education Association is not against a full return to school. I'll repeat that. We are not against a full return to school as long as it can be done safely and while maintaining all safety guidelines. In particular, the COVID-19 safety guideline of maintaining a social distance of six feet is one that we believe must be continued to be followed. According to the latest guidance from the CDC issued on Friday, February 12th, 2021, it is clear that six feet of distance still remains the guideline. The guidelines do not differentiate so, social distancing for adults versus children, nor do they promote less than six feet of distancing. On a National Education Association call with the CDC on Monday, February 15th, it was explicitly stressed that six feet in the absence of widespread vaccinations is the standard. Without question, there was no flexibility with this recommendation. We are currently able to accommodate six-foot social distancing in our classrooms because of the lower numbers. If we return at a distance of less than six feet, unmasked or masked, before teachers have the opportunity to vaccinate, everyone's health in these rooms could potentially be compromised. Some community members who have been the, the most vocal in challenging school board members to return to five-day in-school instruction have been quoted as saying that they are, quote, "willing to take the risk." My question is, whose lives are you willing to risk? Other students' lives? Teachers' lives? Teachers' families' lives? Please help me understand how we are considering it safe to bring students back in four to five days a week while we are still following safety protocols by having committee meetings, faculty meetings, board meetings and in-service in a virtual setting. There are alternatives to getting back into school for more days. These alternatives would keep class sizes low enough to allow for six feet of social distancing, increasing staff, the ready of mobile units, and the community's commitment to controlling community spread by providing vaccines for school staff. We now, we know and strongly believe that students, educators and families and the community will benefit from our students returning person learning. We want to make sure that this is done as safely as possible. This is not the time, this is not the time to make the change.
Your five minutes is up.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Uh, next on the list is Kim Benz. Uh, Kim, if you would like to speak, please unmute your microphone. I see you on the meeting, but you look like you are muted right now.
This is Mark Benz. I was able to speak for both of us earlier, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next will be Ariel Sly.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, my name's Ariel Sly. I live on 43 Fourth Street. Uh, I want to start the meeting off on a positive note and just as a teacher myself, want to thank the teachers for everything that they're doing right now. I know that this is not the hand that anybody wants to be dealt with, especially, um, I work with special education and I know how hard this can be right now. So I do want to thank, um, all the teachers for everything that they're doing. Um, I do also want to kind of lean into that, why have we not tried to go towards that full-time? Um, I know that there are other schools around us that are going full-time like Catty, Bangor, Northwestern, Salisbury, Stockton Valley, Southern Lee High, Whitehall, Lee Heighton. Um, there are other school districts who are talking about going full-time are either talking about four or five-day like Bethlehem, Easton, Nazareth, Northampton. Um, why has this not been discussed with our school district? We haven't even discussed a date yet. Uh, how are they doing it safely? I know we, um, you know, Mr. Weber had just talked about how we're not, um, we're following the CDC guidelines and that it's not, it's not feasible to go back right now, but a lot of districts around us are. They're going four or five days a week and we haven't even, you know, discussed a date to possibly move forward with that. Uh, the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment requires equal education opportunity. The key word is equal. How are we considering this an equal education opportunity if other districts around us are attempting four or five days and we haven't even discussed a date to possibly do that yet? I chose virtual personally for my child, not because I wanted to, but because that was the only thing that made sense for my daughter as she has some struggles as far as attention deficit disorder and rude, kind of flip-flopping her schedule with the hybrid model just seemed like it would really mess up her rhythm. So I chose virtual, again, not because I wanted to, but because I felt that that was the best choice for my daughter to keep her in a stable educational environment. These poor hybrid learners, I've seen them not being able to go to school for multiple days because of snow, which I know that's nothing that we can control, but they are being pushed back to virtual. I know for a long time they were having no live Zooms. So for me, I feel like the virtual education was better because at least my daughter was getting live Zooms every single day, which unfortunately those hybrid children are not. Again, where is the equal there? How are we, how are we, you know, comparing that? Okay, our, our virtual kids are getting livestreamed every day and our hybrid kids got pushed to the side. Again, I'm glad I chose that virtual schedule, but it has not been easy, especially with me returning to school. My, my grandma or my mother has been coming down and helping with education who knows absolutely nothing about computers and cannot help when my daughter struggles at home to get on her online every single day. Like Mr. Dachowitz said, if you're uncomfortable, why don't you stay home? Have everybody sign a waiver that takes the liability off the school so that we don't have to worry about if anybody from the school contracts COVID. It's not the school's liability. We want to talk about the safety, but we're not going to talk about any other issue besides COVID. This has created so much economic status stress, abuse, regression, nutritional issues for our kids and especially our mental health. I know technology definitely heightens children's mental health, especially with my child with ADHD. I know that her anger issues have definitely heightened over everything that's going on right now. And I'm sure we've seen the regression with not only our children in special education, but for our regular education children as well. What is stopping us from pulling our children out right now of our public education system and putting them into a public charter school? Or if we're homeschooling now anyway, what is stopping us from sending them to a non-NLSD homeschooling program, which would cost the districts way more money out of pocket than what we're doing right now if they're already in homeschool? If we want a better education for our children, what is stopping us as parents to, to making our own decision? And I don't want to do that. I don't want to hurt the district, but at this point, I want my daughter back in school. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, next on the list is Elizabeth Taves. I do not see Elizabeth, um, connected. Elizabeth, if you connected, uh, please unmute. Okay, I don't think Elizabeth is with us, so we'll skip to the next person. Uh, the next person on the list is Tara Williams.
Hi. Good evening, Tara Williams. I'm at 7331 West Hillcrest Lane in Sladington. Um, first I want to say I appreciate having the meeting tonight. And while I commend the teachers and staff for doing their best during a very difficult time, um, we can't keep the lives of our children on hold forever. I understand that COVID has a lot of people concerned and it is a real, a real threat. But the risks, the research shows that the risks associated with missing in-person schooling are actually higher than our children acquiring COVID. Um, they have a higher risk of suicide, attempting suicide than they do of acquiring COVID in school. Um, the mental health of our kids is at risk. They're at a complete disadvantage by not being allowed back in the classroom full-time. Um, private schools have stayed open without issues. How can they do that? As many of the parents have been saying, um, it, it's like a broken record at this point. You don't need me to repeat it, but other schools are reopening. I've looked at some of the meeting minutes and somewhere I saw a reason for not opening was the signed attestation statement, um, that it's binding. I don't know if I'm misinformed or correct me if I'm wrong, but can't you resubmit that? Uh, another thing, have you really thought about or asked any of these kids? How are they doing? How are they really doing? The mental health aspect, as many of the parents have mentioned, is, is really scary. Like I said, with the suicide risk, they're more at risk for that. Mr. Weber mentioned about the safety of the staff. I know the staff is probably more at risk than the kids are, but one of the parents mentioned, um, I was going to mention it because many people have said about the local bingo hall. There's the most vulnerable population. There they are. Packed, packed house. No masks whatsoever. And our kids can't go to school. Um, I'm a taxpayer and I pay a pretty nice size chunk of taxes for an education that my son is not getting. He's a third grader. Surrounding schools are reopening. Why aren't we? There was an article done back in January about the COVID funds being spent on the mitigation efforts. And I found it interesting that, um, Director Kern, I'm going to quote him, is saying that the technology, um, is used for learning and it's not designed that way, is a tool to enhance learning. Well, if it's designed as a tool to enhance learning, let's stop using it as just the primary way of learning. I really don't have much else to say other than we need to get these kids back in school. What is the reason why? What's the reason why they're not there? They need to get back before the end of the year. Is it that attestation statement or is it really the safety? CDC guidelines, the six feet? Well, there's been talk and research from the World Health Organization that three feet is sufficient. Um, an Indiana school, they went to three feet. So CDC is even considering. CDC is all for resuming full-time classes. So who's to say? You know? I know there's risks. I, I'm a nurse. I've lost loved ones. So I understand the risk totally. Please do the right thing and go to bat for our kids to come back. God bless you all. Thank you again, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, the next person on the list is Katya Bender.
Hello, um, my name is Katya Bender, um, 1067 Pine Tree Drive in Sladington. I currently have three students in the Northern Lee High School District, a fourth grader, a second grader and a kindergartner. And I just, I would like to begin by saying that I feel that as a tax-paying parent, it is my responsibility to make the decisions regarding my child's health and safety and it is the school's responsibility to educate my child. If I, as a parent, am not comfortable with them being in the school, then it is my responsibility to find other forms of education for them. If I am comfortable with them being in the school, then my children and my parenting decision should have the right to an education. At the beginning of this school year, my husband and I discussed pulling our children from public school and placing them in a private school where they would receive full and full five-day instruction. Because of my personal love for public education and the idea of public education, we chose not to do this. And we chose to put all of our hope and our support into our public school district. We chose to work side by side with our children's teachers who are doing a fantastic job under the circumstances. I have, I, I speak to my children's teachers on the phone multiple times a week. They reach out to me for advice and help. I reach out to them for advice and help. I, I have put my entire heart and soul into doing everything that I can to ensure that our children can go back to school five days a week. I do not send my children to school if they are at all exhibiting even the slightest sniffle to ensure that we are not spreading germs, along with 90% of all parents that I have spoken to. I do not send my children to school without several masks, so they have multiple mask changes a day and there is never a reason for them to not be masked. I do not send my children to school without their own hand sanitizer so that they are able to follow all of the safety protocols that the school has put in place, regardless of my personal opinion on those safety protocols. Because my goal is to have my children in school. We are not asking for our children to be allowed to run around and cough and spit on their teachers. We are not asking for the school to go maskless when the rest of the community is wearing masks in public and these are the mandates and recommendations of the state. We are asking for our children to get the consistent and in-person education that especially an elementary-age child requires in order to be able to learn. Study after study is showing that elementary-age children specifically do not learn effectively from a screen. They learn effectively from in-person education. All we keep hearing is, oh, well, the studies show that there are the case numbers are high, the numbers are showing this, the number, well, the numbers are also showing that children are failing at an increased rate in all school districts that are not full in-person, including Northern Lee High. The numbers are showing attendance issues that have never before been seen in our school district. The numbers are showing children falling through the cracks. And I am tired of sitting by watching this happen and repeatedly voicing my concerns and doing the best that I can to advocate for not only my own children, but the children in this community who don't have a voice. Who do not have a parent who has the social status privilege to be able to stay at home with them and help educate them. Who do not have a parent who understands the things that they are learning about because they didn't get that same level of education themselves. These, we have students in our district that are getting absolutely no education.
Ms. Bender, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I would just like to finish with my psychological concerns for students. I understand that, yes, there is a virus and yes, it is dangerous. There are many other things that are also deadly and dangerous, but we have never, ever laid our children's mental health out on the chopping block to make up for it. Adults have basically been allowed to choose to live their lives as they are best able to. Our children have been given no choice in the matter and are being asked to not socialize, to not speak to people and to not get an education. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, next on the list is, uh, Mr. Christopher Barnes. Mr. Christopher Barnes?
Good evening. How's everyone doing? Um, thanks for having me. Thanks for doing this. Uh, my name's Chris Barnes. I am a 14-year teacher at Northern Lee High. I teach English, journalism, advisor of the Slate newspaper. Um, I teach English, journalism, advisor of the Slate newspaper, and I'm speaking only for myself here tonight. Um, we have only three-plus months left of the school year, and it seems that COVID cases are going down, thankfully. Um, but my, from my perspective, as a 14-year teacher who takes my students' health as seriously as my own two boys, uh, it's not a reason to jump into a risky attempt at normalcy, despite other districts jumping into that. It's a risk that we could take dangerous steps backwards. Few teachers that I know of have become vaccinated, uh, but many of us are waiting anxiously on the list. And while we all want to be back in the classroom full-time, I cannot stress that enough. To the community and to the parents, I promise you, we do, more than anything. My classroom with your children is my home. We should not rush back to full-time five days while the pandemic is still a threat with three-plus months remaining. Our current situation is nowhere in the ballpark of ideal, but as educators, I promise you that we are all doing more than our best to keep it real under the circumstances. We miss your children terribly. We hate seeing some of them only on a screen. But to me now, that is better safe than the alternative, which could be more destructive. So from, again, only my perspective, please consider keeping the schedule status quo and continuing all the current health and safety measures that we all have been doing very well, mask-wise and everything. There is an editorial in the latest issue of the Slate. Cheap plug. So that way, in the fall, which is my hope, we can be as much back to normal as we all desire, and we can all just celebrate safely together. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next two people, the next two people on the list, uh, can you please mute your microphone, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Next two people on the list, I do not see here, so we will skip them. Um, and then if we come to Allison Crucial. Allison, are you?
Mr. Hill, can you call their names anyway, please?
Uh, yes, we had Lori Frame. I do not see Lori in the list. And the next one was Lori Wolf. I do not see that Lori joined us either. So we will move on to Allison Crucial.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I want to thank the school board, um, for allowing, um, ourself, myself, the union, and all of the parents tonight to come and speak, um, and give input regarding what has been going on in our district for the past year. Um, I do not have a lot to say tonight. I just would like to reiterate that we are definitely, as an association, committed to bringing our kids back full-time. Um, as a counselor in the district, I do see the residual effects of what is happening with some of them, but safety has to remain a top priority. And there are, at this point in time, a lot of unanswered questions as to how that is going to look. The CDC is recommending the six-feet distance, and I know some parents are saying about the three-feet distance, but what if that cannot occur? What then? So I ask that the board, as you move forward and you take everything that was said tonight into consideration, that you are thinking of the long-term effects, and you are being proactive for our students and for all of our faculty in this district. Because we have been successful at keeping our numbers very low this year, and we want to be able to maintain that for the next three months of school. We would not want to see the back-and-forth ping-pong ball of having to shut down because we have two cases and it's causing us to shut down for a week. We open back up, occurs again. I do not think that that would be in the best interest of any of our parents, students, faculty in our district. So I ask that the school board and the administration be very proactive as they move forward, that we do not have to be reactive down the road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, the next person on the list is Amanda Bayshore. Uh, I do not see Amanda. Amanda, if you're here, please unmute yourself. I do not believe Amanda joined us, so we will skip Amanda. Uh, next is Susan Bachman.
Hi there. Um, I just, I don't have a lot to say either. I pretty much just wanted to, um, thank the parents, um, who have given teachers positive comments because we are really trying to do the best that we can, uh, for all of your children. Um, I also wanted to say that, um, I think every teacher would agree that if you had a choice between in-person or virtual teaching, that, you know, in-person definitely has benefits, uh, more benefits than anything. Um, but right now, honestly, looking at my classroom, um, I don't think I, I definitely could not have 30-plus kids in my classroom, in my homeroom, um, and keep, um, a six-feet distance, let alone a three, I don't, I don't even think three feet would work, um, in our classroom, just because our classrooms are over 30 kids per classroom. So I think sometimes, um, you know, some of these details are left out, and I just wanted to let you know that that's, you know, a lot of the reason, uh, that we're trying to keep things safe and, um, we're doing the best we can, but I don't see how that would be possible with bringing everybody back. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the list, uh, is Ashley Reinick. I do not see Ashley here. Ashley, if you're here, please unmute yourself now. Does not look like Ashley joined us tonight, so we will skip Ashley. Uh, next will be Richard Roberts. I believe you joined with phone, so please, uh, you may, you may press star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. So, um, hello, and thank you, uh, for your time. First, I, I would not want to be i- in any of your positions a- as a school board. Um, a- and this is nothing personal about anyone that has any opposite feelings or thoughts. Uh, you will have people not happy with, with whatever decision you make. That decision has to be made, though, based on what is best for 100% of the student body, teachers, and community in general, not what's best for a group of parents that are being louder than others, which I understand for their best interest. My son's been virtual 100% this whole year. He's handled it extremely well. Uh, Mrs. DiBilio has been amazing. He has al- always been good academically in school, has run into issues attention-wise, um, a- and other small issues here or there. This year, haven't had that. I, I've actually had to speak with him less academically than I have in previous years. Uh, you know, so, so this situation a- and what you're hearing from many is not the voices for all, and tha- that's why I wanted to speak up. Um, and I'm not going to sit here and say shame on them, the, the other families for saying what they said, because I get it. All right? Everyone has their own reason. Totally understand. I need you, though, a- as a school board, to understand the perception you're placing on the school district. Here we are, one week before a regular school board meeting, with an emergency meeting called. So I, I question why. I- in Northern Lee High, I know for a fact, we have zero tolerance for bullying. Then why does it appear that you, as a school board, are being bullied into making a rash decision? Why couldn't this be done next week at the normal school board meeting? Or a month ago? Or heck, even three months ago? Why did we pick hybrid from the get-go if we're going to allow the, the, the voices of upset parents make the decisions for us? So if each and every one of you on the board truly believes in your heart that we should be back four to five days a week, then you should also have to explain to us why now and not previously. What is going back into the classroom four to five weeks, telling the parents that felt safe sending their kids two days a week with six-foot guidelines? And what about spacing on the buses? How's that, how's going back not going to make the buses a Petri dish for spreading diseases? Is pushing all the students in four to five days a week going to force families to remove kids from hybrid and go virtual? If that's the case, how is that fair? For six months now, a few hundred students have been virtual and have built a rapport and a schedule with their teachers. So to the naked eye, many may think, why do I care as to what this decision is? Well, up until tonight, nobody's been able to give me 100% guarantee that my son's virtual learning won't change. If it doesn't change, then fine. Okay. I understand. But a- a- as a, a former alum, the perception that's being created, I'm still not happy with. If the numbers I got were correct, only a little higher than 50% of families responded to the last survey, we should know that the ones responding were probably the ones that were angry and upset and want to go back full-time. I think we can also assume the families that didn't respond are okay with the current scenario. Maybe we're here tonight because of myself and so many other content and happy families who haven't spoken up. Shame on us for that. We sat back, many of us knowing what was being said and done by others silently. We should have been more vocal. Northern Lee High has been doing an adequate job compared to other school districts in the Valley and Colonial League. Many people talk about catty. What many people don't know is that nearly 40% of the students stayed home. Many people reference Whitehall, but they don't seem to care about the fact that the school board does not have a positive working relationship with the school administration and teachers. Heck, the superintendent left the first school board meeting this year in tears. Many of these same people who are pushing for four to five days back in school are the same families that I see, not social distancing, um, meeting with families during the holidays, and not wearing masks all the time. Many of these parents could be the same ones that sit back and then have words, negative words, if their son would get sick, or their daughter does get sick, or God forbid, something even worse happens to a family member. And I think that's where a lot of people aren't looking outside of that.
Mr. Roberts, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. What about you as a, a parent or your grand, or your parents? All right? I understand this isn't fun for anyone. School isn't built to be fun. School is built to learn and work hard to get better. Just know, by making the decision tonight to go back four to five days a week, you may be silenced in one crowd, but you're also stirring the pot of another. Could this decision cost the district more money in the long run? Absolutely it could. Just like someone said, if you make the opposite decision, it could. All right? I hope everyone makes your own decision tonight based off of what you, as a scoreboard, school board member feels, not based off of the, the.
Your time is up.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, Richard, could you please repeat your name and address? I, I, we didn't get it at the start of your, uh, comments.
My apologies. I rushed. Uh, Richard Roberts, 1134 Main Street, Sladington.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Next on the list is Heather Royer. Again, please, uh, say your name and your address before you speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi. Heather Royer, 7170 Walnut Street in Sladington. Um, first, I'd like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of our children. I have a dot, fifth-grade daughter. I would like to thank the teachers. She, they, her teachers have done a fabulous job helping us navigate all the technologies this year, and they have to teach and maintain attention of students who are in many different settings. I have been in contact with Mr. Link over the past couple of months over my frustrations with this situation. This whole hybrid learning has taken a toll on myself and my child. And if your child is doing fabulous, great, I'm happy for you, but education is not a one-size-fits-all. I have a background in education. I had to resign from my position at Northampton Aries School District to stay home with my child because the daycare she was attending was not going to accommodate virtual learning. So I virtually, I, I essentially would be paying for her to play and then doing four or five hours of schoolwork on the days that I have to pick her up. So our choice as a family was for me to stay home and do the virtual learning with her. Now, I understand the need to keep everyone physically safe, but I believe this transmission of this virus is not from children to children. That we need to start focusing more on the mental health of our students. My fifth grader went from honor roll and principal's list to crying at home, having meltdowns, and failing tests and quizzes. This is not acceptable, and it has nothing to do with the teachers at all. It's the fact that my child cannot focus at home. There's distractions here. I can't imagine how these students are focusing at daycare with all these other children running around in the background and having the daycare teachers be in charge of their education. That's not acceptable. Some children may excel in virtual learning, but as I said, my child does not. I have seen the decline in her mental and emotional health. Her grades started falling, which has affected her confidence. Hybrid learning has been a disservice to many children. Children have distractions at home, their daycare, or whatever setting they are completing their work in. I have listened to my daughter's meets, and if you, as a parent, have listened, you can see, understand the chaos. I don't know how teachers are doing this. I don't know, as an adult, that I would be able to focus and attend to all, with all the distractions that are going on. I am sure if you looked at the academic performance of these students, you would see a decline across the board. Education is defined as a discipline that is concerned with methods of teaching and learning in schools. Our children have suffered enough, and so many things were taken from them this past year. Please, I'm begging you to think about the overall health of our children. And as a taxpayer, I am urging you to get our students back into the physical building like so many districts are already doing. I understand every district is, that every district is different, and their numbers are different, but I'm going, I refuse to sit back and not fight for the best interest and education of my child. And unless you have a child in this situation, it is hard for you to think about what's best interest of children. I am sure if you ask the teachers, they do want to get back, and we have heard from teachers, they do. And I understand the safety concerns because, again, I was at Northampton, I see what they're trying to do, and they're working really hard to get these kids back into school. They see, these teachers see the issues concerning our children. And I understand, again, that we need to keep everyone safe, but other districts are getting back. Let's make education as important as we made the sports that we did in the spring and fall. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next on the list is Jennifer Arnold. Please state your name and your address before you begin to speak.
Hello. Jen Arnold here. 3344 Spring Valley Road, Sladington, Pennsylvania. Uh, first and foremost, thank you so much for letting all of us parents speak this evening. Also, I do understand that safety of our students and our teachers are of utmost importance. Understand that. But if you want your child to be in school five days a week, why can't we make that an option? If you, if you're not, if you don't feel safe sending your child to school, then continue with hybrid. Continue with Bulldog Academy. Whatever you may choose. Unfortunately, I do see. Unfortunately, I do see that there are 40 people on this meeting when we have way more parents and families in this district not wanting to fight for our children. Our children deserve an education. They deserve in-person education. And yes, the pandemic is real. It is a not pretty virus. Believe me, I know, I'm a nurse. I've been doing it since March of last year. I've watched people die from it. I've watched people survive it. Our children are not the ones that are most susceptible to rece- to getting this. And most of our teachers are not either. So I ask the Northernly High School District and school board to please consider another option for those of us that are willing to send our children to school five days a week because they need it. Not because they want it, they need it. They, they, they need to be stimulated, they, they need it. These kids being at home, okay, yeah, that, that's okay to a certain extent. But, but they're not benefiting. They're not, they're not growing. Okay, they're getting instruction, but are they growing? Isn't that the goal? They need to grow. They need to learn. And unfortunately, the past year has not helped that. So I guess as most of us parents, most on here that have voiced their opinions, they want something better for their child, as we all do. All of us want better for our children than what we had. So alls I'm asking as far as the school board and the district is concerned is, can you give us some kind of option? Can you give us an option to provide five-day instruction for our children? I mean, hey, I get it. People are afraid to get it, people are afraid to be around it, whatever. I was afraid.
Ms. Arnold, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. But my last statement will be, can you please provide something for those of us that would like to provide five-day instruction for our children? If you don't want that, then continue along with what the district has provided to us. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you having this meeting for everyone. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, lastly on the list is Tracy Ettinger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Tracy Ettinger. My address is 4546 Joshua Lane, Northam.
What?
Um, can you hear me? Okay, I think somebody's unmuted, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, first of all, I wanted to say good evening to Mr. Link, the school board administration, and members of the Northernly High Community. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Link and the board and the administration for all of your hard work and difficult decisions that you've made in the past and the difficult decisions that I hear that you will need to make in the future. Um, first, I want to say that I think that we can all agree, administration, school board, staff, and parents, that we all want to have the kids back in person for their social and academic needs. I personally can say as a teacher, I have never worked harder in my life or have felt more stress than I have this year in the ever-changing dynamics that we're facing as teachers. Uh, this is compounded for me personally by being a parent of school-aged children myself, and I fully see the situation from both sides, as many of the teachers in our district are parents as well. I'd like to thank the parents for their assistance, their cooperation, and their patience. I know, as many of us do, that this is not easy firsthand. That said, we want to make sure that if we reopen, to do it in a safe way. At this time, our current numbers, there are classrooms that if students are all brought back, will not have the six-feet distance, but most likely will have less than three feet. What is considered feasible and acceptable? At this point at Peters, students are eating snack in the room unmasked and taking short drink breaks unmasked in our classrooms. There is one class from each grade that is currently eating lunch in the classroom unmasked. In this current model, we do not have enough seats in the cafeteria. The children are unable to use their lockers for safety reasons, and we have our desks pushed up against the lockers to give us as much space as possible. With added numbers, there will be no place to store jackets, bookbags, Chromebooks, et cetera. If they're stored on the floor, this will block already small aisleways in which we travel, causing a safety hazard. If the numbers remain, some classrooms will have 25 students in them, not including the classroom teacher or any paraprofessionals maybe working with the children. If a child does develop COVID, with the lessening of social distancing regulations, many more children will need to quarantine as well as staff. This may cause an even more difficult challenge in finding coverage for classes. I know that we all agree that we would like to return to having all of our students back in person for their academic and mental well-being, but additional consideration needs to be given as how to further account for the student's safety and the staff's physical health as well. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Fedorchak, that was the last person, uh, I had on the list to address the board at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I want to thank everyone who presented tonight. And I will now say that we are finished with public comments.
Gary, would it, Gary, this is Matt. Would it be possible for Eric to just ask if any of the people who were not here perhaps joined, or if there is anyone else who wants to comment before we move on, just to make sure we gave everybody a chance?
As long as they were, as long as they had followed the procedures, Mr. Green.
Yeah, sure, of course, yeah. I'm, I'm not saying we changed the procedures, but I know there were four or five names called who were not present at the time, and I would just wonder if, if perhaps any of them have joined since then, that was all.
Yeah, we can pause for, for a moment. Um, if anybody, uh, had joined, uh, that wanted to speak, uh, please unmute your microphone now.
Thank you for doing that, Gary, and Eric, I appreciate it.
Very good, that's fine, I appreciate that too, Mr. Green. Alright, then we will, uh, close the public comments. Mr. Hill, if you'll take care of that for us. And board members, we will now go into our special board report. I will give you a minute or two to have Mr. Link prepare because we will look now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorchak, thank you, Mr. Hill, and Mrs. Wagner as well. Um, Eric, I'm going to ask that you just kind of, uh, for this part of the presentation, and since public comment is over until the end of the meeting, um, that you mute the mics and turn off the chat within the Google Meet. The chat should remain in YouTube. Thank you. Um, I'm going to share my screen now, and give me one second for that, please. Okay, give me a thumbs up if you can see that title slide. Alright, thank you. Okay, we are going to, uh, share out this evening, uh, data on COVID-19 within our school buildings. And we are also going to share out, um, survey responses. We're going to share out some, uh, the current recommended models from the Department of Health and CDC. We're going to share out some pros and cons of returning to four to five days, some unknowns, and then some choices for the school board to consider, uh, at the end of the presentation. So that'll kind of be the scope or the sequence of the presentation this evening. When we get to the building-level academic data, building-level administration will share out, uh, those slides, um, that are germane to their school building. So again, uh, COVID-19 data and survey presentation for this evening's special board meeting. I kind of walked you through the purpose already, but I'll let you take a look at that for a second before we transition to the next slide. Okay, here is a data snapshot of the cumulative cases in the district since the very first student case and the very first employee case. Uh, first employee case was October 28th, and the first student case was November 8th. This is cumulative. Near the left side of the table here, you will see that it's broken down by building level for students. It has a number of students in each building, the number of students testing positive. Overall, that percentage has been 1.91% throughout the school year. For, uh, employees, same, same structure by building, number of employees in that building, number of positive cases, and then the percentage for the building, and then the overall percentage for the district for the start of the school year cumulatively for employees is 10.42%. And then below that, we have kind of some, uh, adults that are either directly associated with the district or they're contracted type of people, um, so like a game worker, a coach, or, uh, other people that spend time in our buildings on a daily basis but are not directly employed by the school district, so contracted employees. You'll see on the right, there is, uh, the 14-day rolling window for each building for positive cases. I'm happy to report that we have no active 14-day rolling windows. So in other words, we haven't had to report a positive case, um, within that timeframe for any building. Okay, now we're going to go into student-level data by building. I will share out data directly related to positive cases and quarantines. And then the building administrator, the building principal, and for the high school, um, our, our assistant principal, Mr. Hauser, will share out that data when we get to the academic set. Overall, in the district, district-wide, our peak was 11 cases in November. The month that just ended, February, we had four cases. So you can see that it's trending down for students. If you look at it by a bi-week breakdown, you can kind of see the trend there. A high of five in one week. Last two weeks, we've had zero positive cases for students. For Peters Elementary School, we've had a high of one week on the weeks that are identifi- I'm sorry, one positive case for the students that are there. Um, broken out by week, we've had no positive cases the last two weeks. For quarantines at Peters Elementary School, we've had a high of, on November 30th, of 30 students being quarantined at one time in Peters Elementary School. The week that just ended, the week of February 22nd, we've, we had two students on quarantine. Quarantines are trending down. Mr. Schneider Wright, in a, in a short minute, is going to share with you some academic data. I would like to point out here, though, that PDE stated to school districts, and we have also shared this with our educators, uh, that, well, I'm, I'm not going to read that to you there, but this is to, we needed to decide as educators, what part of the curriculum are we going to emphasize in a time that we have with our students? And which part may not get as much attention as it would typically get in a year when there's not a pandemic? So we took that guidance, uh, and we implemented it here in the school district. We were strategic instructional choices about which content to prioritize must be made. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schneider Wright. He's going to talk about literacy and numeracy, and also about attendance. Mr. Schneider Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Link. Good evening, everyone, it's a pleasure to see you all this evening. Um, as Mr. Link said, over the next few slides, we'll be taking, taking a look at data for both ELA and math using the DIBELS Next Assessments for ELA and the Easy CBM Math Assessments for math. Um, these are typically given three times per year. So as we look at the slide that's up there now, that represents the data that is from last school year, 2019 and 2020. Um, as we take a look at the next few slides, they're all going to look the same, so I'll take a moment and describe what we're seeing. Um, you'll see that there are three, that there are three categories, each represented by a color. Students who are in the green are, uh, considered core support. These are our tier-one students who do not need any extra support to be successful within our core curriculum. Students in the yellow are considered, um, strategic support. These are our tier-two students who may need some additional supports to be successful. And students in the red are considered intensive support. These are our tier-three students who need a greater level of support to be successful. Now, this slide again represents last year's, uh, data for ELA. We presented this at our, our data meeting, um, earlier in the year. If you go to the next slide, please, Mr. Link. Oh, one back, please. Thank you. Um, when we take a look at this ELA data at the same, uh, within the same timeframe, um, it demonstrates that more students began the year, um, in the red. And from the beginning to the middle of the year, there have been some slight gains in first grade and some slight regression in second grade, uh, from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Uh, the kindergarten students, uh, based on this data, have demonstrated, uh, the biggest struggles this year. Um, in the middle-of-the-year assessment, 46% um, of kindergarten students were considered intensive support or in the red. So, so everybody knows this is composite data, this is of the entire student body. Um, and again, broken down by grade. So as administrators, we wanted to take a look and examine the impact that attendance has played on this data. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Mr. Link. This is the same exact years, uh, this is this year, um, regarding the same exact student population. But what we took a look, if you take a look on the left, um, this graph represents students who have 10 or more absences. Um, and the graph on the right represents students who have perfect attendance as of the beginning of the year. Um, this graph shows, and again, it's the same students, it's just a smaller grouping, taking a look at those, uh, certain populations. If you take a look at the left, you'll see that 70 cent, 77, excuse me, percent of students with 10 or more absences are considered intensive support in the red. Students on the right-hand side, who have perfect attendance, almost 70% of them are considered core support or within the green. It's almost an exact opposite of those graphs. Um, the numbers you see, uh, again, uh, show that students who are fully engaging in what we're doing now in both the current, uh, hybrid and five-day models are being relatively successful. And believe it or not, that student data on the right-hand side is right around what the composite data was for last year in the traditional model. Obviously, the, um, the red in the composite data for, uh, ELA um, is because more students are not able to, are not engaging in the, the current model. Next slide, please, Mr. Link. So the next three slides show the same exact, but for math. Um, this slide shows last year's math data for the beginning and into the middle of the year. Um, and I'll highlight both of them on the next slide. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Mr. Link. Now, uh, believe it or not, this slide represents the data for this year. Again, the middle-of-the-year data is comparable, or actually, in many cases, better than last year, um, even though we're in a different instructional model. Um, from last year, middle-of-the-year to this year, middle-of-the-year, kindergarten students who are considered in the green are up 26% um, in kindergarten. In first grade, they're up 4%, and in second grade, um, down 2%. If you can go to the, the final slide, please, Mr. Link. And the final slide is the same exact, I showed. And the final slide is the same exact I showed earlier regarding students with 10 or more absences on the left and students with perfect attendance on the right. Because math scores as a, as a whole school are up this year, the, the results aren't as drastic for the students who are 10 or more absences. But you'll still see on the left-hand graph, 41% of the students with 10 or more absences are in the red, while, and again, a very proud number, 76% of the students with perfect attendance are in the green. That means better than 3/4 of the student body who have, if fully engaged in what we're currently doing, are, you know, successful without any supports in math. And that ends my, my data report. So it's back to Mr. Link. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider, right. So now we're going to take a quick look at the COVID-positive cases and the COVID quarantines for Slatington Elementary. You'll see there, on a weekly basis, we had a high of two positive cases on the week of January 4th, as well as February 8th. No positive cases within the last two weeks. Slatington Elementary student quarantines. We had a high of 29 students on quarantine on the week of January 25th. Last week, we had five students on quarantine for various reasons. Please remember that a student can be on quarantine because it are considered a close contact from somebody in the community that has tested positive, somebody in our household is a close contact, they traveled out of state. That would also have them on quarantine up to the end of the day yesterday. That, that restriction has been lifted today by the governor. Or students showing symptoms that were quarantining until they could get test results. Mr., Mr. Pine is now going to share some academic and attendance data for Slatington Elementary School.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Link, and thank you, everyone. So I, I'm going to intro this just by saying you're going to see some similar patterns to what Mr. Schneider had pointed out, two of the big ones being reading versus math and one being attendance versus non-attendance. And I want to open this by saying that honestly, the reading versus math thing, like a handful of things in terms of the data, came as a surprise. If I had speculated, which I did, at the beginning of the year as to where we would see the, you know, sort of the greatest growth as opposed to the greatest challenges, I would have, as a former English teacher, said, well, math is going to be a real struggle because we're going to lose potential days in school. So the first graph here, what you're going to see is grades three through six. And what we're looking at is the percentage of students who are at or above benchmark in ELA, so reading. And so as we look through, you're going to see that third grade in all of these begins in September because we don't have STAR data dating back to March of second grade. And then just so that you have a sense of how things change, not only since September, but also since March, since we went into this, kind of see that. And, and what you're going to see is actually a lot of the greatest decline, the greatest issue ended up coming up between March and September. So if I walk through this in third grade, what you're ultimately going to see is between September, and we did the benchmark in January, is in 1920, a 9% increase in the 1920 school year. And 2021 school year, it's relatively level, but you're going to see a 1% decrease. As we move into grade four, again, you're going to see from March to September, a 15% drop, a pretty significant drop. And then in 1920, ultimately, a 15% increase from September to January. And 20 to 21, a 1% decrease from September to January. And I should have said this at the beginning, again, as a benchmark, this is not measuring the same thing at all sets of time. It's assuming growth. So if the students are at or above benchmark, that's not the same place. That's a new place because it's been time since the last time they were tested. In fifth grade, March to September, we see a 16% drop. And then we see in 1920, a 9% decrease from September, or increase, I'm sorry, from September into January, a 13% increase and then 9% decrease for 2021. Sorry about that, I stumbled over that a bit. And then in grade six, a 16% drop from March into September. And then in 1920, a 7% increase. And in 2021, a 9% decrease. So again, all of these reflect what I, what I'm saying, honestly, is a surprise. And I, I think it's a surprise because all of this is unfamiliar. The idea of students being in school, not being in school, which was that we saw a decrease in a lot of places in ELA. Now, again, if we switch to the next slide, Mr. Link, I'm going to walk through kind of the attendance impact. And so what I ended up doing was I have our students with high absences.
You there, Mr. Pine? Looks as though he disconnected. Yes. Okay, Dr. Stoker, would you like to walk us through the rest of Mr. Pine's slide here, please?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. Back, Scott?
I am. I am. I'm, I'm sorry about that. I just turned my camera off. I don't, I don't know what happened. I've never had an internet issue. So I'm sorry. So going into the attendance impact.
Mr. Pine, I think we lost you again.
I'm sorry. Hello?
Hey, Mr. Pine, I'm going to ask Dr. Stoker to walk us through the rest of your slides just until your connectivity becomes a little bit more stable.
Okay. I'm going to call in.
Okay. Dr. Stoker, can you walk us through these slides here, then?
Sure. So what you're looking at here is attendance and the impact attendance has on ELA. So we're looking at the percent of students at or above benchmark. When we're looking at the blue lines for each of those grade levels, that's high absences. So that's greater than or equal to 10 absences. And when we're looking at the red, we're looking at regular attendance, which would be, you know, better attendance, students are coming to school, and that's less than 10 absences. So we can see for third grade, we have September, November, and January. And the percentage of students that are at or above benchmark with regard to the absences. So we're seeing that students that have higher absences are obviously not as successful as the students who have less absences. So for third grade in September, we have 30% of students with the high absences that were at or above benchmark compared to 48%. In November, that's 11% compared to 67%. And then in January, 33% versus 67% for third grade. Looking at fourth grade, same thing there. We're looking at the impact of absences. The higher the absence, the more absences that students have, the, the less we have those students at benchmark. So for March of grade, for grade four, students going into grade four, we had 78%. Then we have students coming into the fall in September. So we have 33% versus 59% with the high absences being 33. The lower absences are regular attendance being 59. 33 in November versus 54. And then in January, 30% versus 66% with the regular attendance. And you'll see the same trends for grade five and for grade six as well. Coming into September in grade five, students who have high absences were at 20% benchmark where compared to 66% of students who had regular attendance. November, we had 35% with high absences that made the benchmark compared to 62. And then in January, we had 35% of students who made at or above benchmark with high absences versus the students who had regular attendance at 73%. In grade six, we're seeing again a split, but not as much of a difference there. In September, we had 47% of our students with high absences that made the benchmark compared to 54% with regular attendance. November, 36% with high absences versus 45 that have regular attendance. And then in January, we're at 33% with high absences versus 45% with regular attendance. And again, we have to just remember that as we move through those progressions of months, the skills are getting more difficult for students as well, as, as well as they move up through the grade levels. I don't know if Mr. Pine is back, or I should continue?
Uh, Mr. Pine, are you with us? Are you there, Mr. Pine? Okay, Dr. Stoker.
Sure. So we're looking at the, the same things here. We have percent of students at or above benchmark. We're comparing the 2019-20 data to the 2020-21 data. The blue is last year's data. The red or orangish color is this year's data. So in third grade, we're seeing that there was an increase from September to November of last year, from 66 to 87%, and then a little bit of a drop into 74%. As we moved into this year, we were at 54% at or above benchmark in math in 2021. That increased to 63% in November and continued to increase to 64% this January. When we look at fourth grade, we had students in 2019-20 and September at 78% meant the bed, excuse me, met the benchmark. In November, 85%, and then in January, 81% as compared to 2020-21. The students coming out of third grade in September into fourth grade had 63% at benchmark. That moved up to 66% and then increased to 71% in January. In fifth grade, we're seeing a little bit of a closer match in 1920 to 2021. In the red, or I'm sorry, in the blue, you'll see that we had students at, difficult to see, but I believe it's 64% in the blue. And then we had, they went up to 76% in November. And then moving into January, had 74% of students at benchmark. As compared to this year, the students coming out of fourth grade into fifth grade at, in September, were 63% met the benchmark in math. Into November, that increased to 76% and then dropped off just a little bit in January to 66%. Looking at the sixth grade, the students in 2019 in September coming back into the, that fall, were at 63% were making benchmark in math. That increased to 68% and then went up to 70% in January. And then when we had looked at the students for 2021, coming out of March into September, we had 54% of students at or above benchmark in math in sixth grade. Then in November, it increased to 64% and then dropped off a little bit in January. And again, there's still that increase in skills as well as we're moving throughout the, the semesters and through the testing months that we have.
Thank you, Dr. Stoker. I believe Mr. Pine is now officially back with us. Are you there, Scott?
Okay. Sorry about that. And thank you, Dr. Stoker. I could actually hear that whole last part. And I'm looking at my notes and you said everything that I would have said about those two slides. Moving in for Slatington, into the attendance impact. This is actually another place, I mean, we see a really dramatic impact here. In the first slide, you saw actually math, we jived out. And if we take March to September out of the equation, we're, we're moving in the, in the same direction we typically would. When we take the attendance impact into mind, we kind of see a wider divide. So opening up at the beginning of the year in third grade, again, we don't have any March benchmark data related to STAR. We saw a 35% gap between those students who would end up throughout the course of this year, attending regularly, and those students who would end up not. So as we move forward, we, we see a 10% increase of those students from 57% to 67% in math in the benchmark from January to January. We see a 22% decrease among students to 0% among students who were not attending, who are not, you know, either attending a live stream, completing work, et cetera, which widen that gap from 35% to 67%. As we go into grade four, we opened up again with a 36% gap, 1% higher than third grade. End up with a 37% gap, not as much. But we do see a 4% increase in September of those who are regularly and a 3% increase among those who have absences. And that take out the high absences, 5% higher increase over last year. They've got a 3% increase over. Up here with about a 41% content, a little bit higher, maybe two, eight between those two. But we end up with 41% gap. Actually, stay a little bit closer than that is about after the day being suppressed. I hesitate to say that because of their speculation. So we end up with the high attenders, the increase since September compared to the group last year, with 4% increase compared to, or compared to September for the group who are non-attenders. We end up in pretty much the same place in terms of growth. But among those high attenders, it is a 7% increase over last year's score from fifth grade at the same time. In sixth grade, we end up with 19% gap. I think in September, we end up with a 12% gap. So it actually closes between September and January a little bit, between the, the percentage of students who are at or above benchmark. And we end up with a 10% decrease, and this is where we see the biggest decrease in sixth grade, off of September till now, in those who are at or above benchmark. And a 3% decrease, and this is anomaly, you say, I can't, I can't explain this one, the odd one in the bunch, a 3% decrease from September to January in the percentage of students who are at or above benchmark. One group rather is a 1% decrease from September to January, even in the high attendance group as the, as the January. That's all me. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pine. Up next, for the Northern Lee High Middle School, you'll see that this is the building that has had the fewest positive cases for students in a district with two. And then for quarantines, they've had a high of 17 back on the weeks of November 16th and November 23rd. Last week, they had three children on quarantine. Mrs. Chamberlain is now going to talk some about the academic data and attendance data for the middle school.
Hey, everyone. As we look at this first slide for Northern Lee, Northern Lee High Middle School, it's our seventh-grade cohort. We are going to utilize the STAR data, the same group of kids from their sixth-grade year to their seventh-grade year. So when you look to the left side, you will see that the seventh-grade ELA in the prior year, all at or above, and we, I kept it at January or mid-year so that we were preparing at the same data. In the ELA, one can see that the students have moved about with our, with our intervention, which would be the yellow and in our urgent intervention areas from last year to this year at this time, where our at or above and on watch have gone down. So you're, that's talking about movement going to where kids, the students need intervention at this time. And this could be due to a number of reasons. It could be due to the curriculum. It could be due to the, the course COVID and, and the hybrid. But a lot of the times for seventh-grade students, our ELA curriculum is more difficult, more demanding for the students. In math, the growth was different than that, was, was unexpected. The growth was a, was a positive movement for the at or above student and the on watch, while the urgent declined. Next slide, please. Nope, went to one too many. Okay. So now the eighth-grade cohort. With ELA, we're going to look at this year's data only as last year's data was lost in a, in our software merge. So if you look at this year's data, our urgent for the eighth-grade ELA is quite, is at 30%, where our at and above is at 43% and on our on-watch students and our intervention are somewhere within 13 to 14%. So they are spread out. But when we look at our math, again, the numbers are showing that, of course, are the students who are scoring at or above have gone from last year, they've risen up. There's only been a 1% increase in the urgent area compared to last year. There was, of course, on watch was down as some of those students moved over and the same thing with our students who are intervention. Next slide, please. Now, this graph is from the IR IXL program. And this graph is inclusive of all students. This shows IXL's SMART Score, which is based on a proprietary algorithm that combines accuracy, consistency, and question difficulty to authentically, authentically gauge the student mastery of a topic. So research shows that striving toward mastery is the most effective way to drive student growth. So research shows that striving toward mastery is the most effective way to drive student growth on state assessment. The numbers represent the average per student of skills mastered. So it's all, the whole two hundred and fifty-six students. So as you can see, last year, when they start, when they first started, on average, there was five, and I know I'm pointing at the wrong camera, there was a five, there was two in January. And then, of course, in May, we went to four. This year, we started off, our students in September had mastered, on average, all the students, five point five skills. And now in January, eleven skills. So they are moving up towards mastery in skill enhancement. Next slide, please. So this is my slide on the Northern Lake High Middle School students with ten or more absences. As you can see, those students who are absent ten or more times, our majority are in, you know, when you look at urgent and intervention, that is a strong indicator that they need to be in school and they need to be here to ensure that they are getting the education that they deserve. So if you look at ELA, five of the thirteen students need urgent intervention, that's thirty-eight percent. And the same thing for math, math, it is thirty-eight percent. Could I see the slide for, the next slide, please, for the perfect attendance. So with our students with perfect attendance, fifteen of the students are needed in ELA urgent intervention. Please note that one of our, one of our sub-populations, who very rarely misses and is always in school and is going to fall in that urgent, under that urgent due to the fact that there are growth, but they're moving, but they're, and they're showing growth, but they are going to, they're going to fall into that urgent domain. And they are still being very successful, but they are going to fall in that urgent domain. Then when you look at math, again, we are at or above. Ten of the students are need urgent, that's for only fourteen percent of our, you know, the whole population of the students who have perfect attendance. So that is my data.
Thank you, Mrs. Chamberlain. Okay, next, we're going to look at some high school data for positive cases and quarantine numbers for students. You can kind of see the trend there breaking out by the weeks. You know, the highest we had in any single given week was two positive cases. And then you'll see, we have not had a positive case in the high school since really the week of January eleventh. When we look at quarantines at the high school, you'll see that we had a fifty, a high of fifty-one students on quarantine in a single week. That was back in November sixteenth. The week that just ended, we had nine students on quarantine. At this point, Mr. Hauser is going to walk us through the academic and attendance data for the high school. Mr. Hauser?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Good evening. I hope everyone is well. The high school data is going to look a little bit different from the data my colleagues presented at the other schools, just because the high school is structured a little bit differently. We do not have a third-party standardized system that is used across a grade level because things are very departmentalized here at the high school. We do, however, employ those tools in what are called our Keystone Trigger Courses. And of course, the student will take and then immediately take the Keystone Exam. So they're used primarily as instructional tools, assessment tools. This year, for example, we did use USA Test Prep to develop our remediation programs here at the high school. So that said, this data that I am presenting is based on teacher grades. These are the grades that are reported on the report cards and they are based on the averages for the first semester ending in the middle of January. We're presenting it this way because we felt as though that the board and the public should see, again, particularly for a high school, how we are looking when it comes to progression in credits. The high school, of course, is very dependent upon students earning credits to advance with their classes and proceed to graduation. So what you'll see in the top part, the yellow and the orange, is a cumulative number of each specific grade that was issued to our students as a semester one grade. In total, that on the orange, you can see, we issued one thousand three hundred and eight grades. And the breakdown of where they fall by letter grade is above that. The highest being in the A level with just under five hundred, and then they go from there. To compare to last year, the level of As that were issued is comparable. It's a little bit lower this year. It's not exact, but it's in that realm. We saw the most significant gains in the failures, the Ds, and also the Bs. We have more students earn lower than a B than they did last year. As and Cs are comparable to last year. The percentage breakdown is then in the right column. So you can see the distribution among the total grades, where they fell by score. At the bottom, the blue and white table, this shows how each individual class was performing. So what we did here was, we took the total failures that were issued, one hundred and thirty-two failures overall amongst the entire student body in all departments. And we divided those out amongst our freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So you can see those numbers there with the most number of failures in our freshman class, and they decreased from there with seniors having the fewest. Mr. Lee, next slide, please. Thank you, sir. This is a similar table, but this is specifically geared toward our Keystone Trigger Courses and those prerequisites, any class you must take prior to getting into a Keystone Trigger Course. What's up there in the blue is in our science curriculum. These three courses, Ecology, Academic Ecology, and Honors Ecology are prerequisites for Biology. Biology being, of course, a trigger course for that Keystone Exam. In the second column, we have the enrollment for each of those courses. The third column, the number of failures, and then the percentage of the enrolled students who didn't earn a failure for that class. So we see, for example, in Ecology, eleven of the forty-eight earned a failing grade for a twenty-three percent in that particular class. In the red, these are the mathematics courses that we added that are trigger courses for the Algebra I Keystone or prerequisites for those trigger courses. Our Basic Algebraic Concepts Courses and also Basic Algebra 1B all had zero failures. And the highest was in Algebra 1B, where we had six out of thirty-five enrolled students for a seventeen percent. In the green, we have the trigger courses for Keystone Literature Exams, again, or the prerequisites, English One. And again, the breakdown is, is the same, the enrollment on the left side and then the number of failures in that middle column with a percentage. Now, these percentages become important because, like my colleagues, on the next slide, I will have it broken down, looking at attendance and looking at the, the correlation with attendance. So Mr. Lee, please, next slide. So what we've done here, we've kept the same color coding where the yellow is building wide. These are the, the students who have failed a course building wide and then broken down into our Keystone Trigger Courses, so you can see the numbers there. Across the top, I have in the third column, the students that have no attendance violations. These are students who failed the class and also have no attendance violation. So in that third column, you can see, for example, in the yellow, fifteen percent of those sixty-eight students have no attendance violations but still failed the class. The other columns, they will increase in their severity as you move to the right. I broke down the attendance a little, a little bit more detail because of the way the high school schedule is structured, block schedule. Our classes are eighty-six minutes apiece, so a single day's absence is weighted a little bit more than it might be in a given building. Because of our schedule being semester-based, we're getting a year-long course into a single semester, into ninety days of schooling. So I wanted to report on all of the state reportable categories for attendance. So the way this table can be read, if you look at the yellow, again, we had sixty-eight students. Of those sixty-eight, eighty-five, eighty-five percent had at least three unexcused absences, which makes them legally truant. Fifty-four percent were considered habitually truant. This is six or more unexcused absences. Forty-four percent were considered chronically absent. This is ten percent total absence or nine days of instruction, and that's absent for, for any reason. And then the last category is severely chronically absent. This is twenty percent of the cumulative days, or this would have been eighteen days absent by the time this report was calculated. So as we move down into these areas, for example, you can see in Keystone Biology, we had twelve students earn a failure in a prerequisite course for that class. Ninety-nine percent of those twelve students were at least habitually truant. Three-quarters were chronically absent and the third were severe. We see similar numbers as we get into mathematics, a little bit lower. We're looking at eighty percent of those students in the truancy levels and then about three, about three and four at the chronically absent or above level. And then for literature, we have ninety percent and then some drops to seventy, sixty, and thirty. So we do have a direct correlation, again, between the different attendance categories and the failures that are issued across the, across the building. Moving forward, I will say that at the high school, we are looking to implement for the spring and into next year, a standardized system that will be used across grade levels. We will be implementing the classroom diagnostic tools as designed by the Department of Education. Those are commonly called CDTs, if you hear that acronym. Mr. Velacity and myself have already begun our training in the CDTs and how to administer them, how to read the data. And we are expecting those to be administered in the very near future with more than one session to be administered before the end of the year. And that will inform what we do moving forward. Mr. Lee, that's all for my data report.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Okay, up next, our Director of Special Education, Mrs. Data, is going to share some information about our primary literacy software curriculum for students, students with special needs being Read 180 and System 44. So Mrs. Data, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm just going to talk short about some data that we pulled from the first semester. I'm going to compare 2019, 2020 onto 2020, 2021 first semester. Those were the months of August to February. We're going to compare the students that were enrolled in Read 180 to, and also System 44 Intervention. We implement that at Northern Lake High from grades three to twelve in all of our language arts classrooms in, for special education students. Next slide, please. So just to give you a quick background placement, if they are going into System 44 or Read 180 is done through a reading inventory. That reading inventory measures a lexile level of the student. With System 44, it is based upon the phonetic-based program and that separates readers into basically pre-decoders developing and then advanced coders would move on to Read 180 after completion of System 44. Read 180 is evidence-based and it focuses on comprehension skills. Both give us lexile levels. If you look at the table there, it'll tell you that grades three to five, we're looking in a typical year to be increasing our lexile level, one hundred and forty points. And grades six to eight, seventy points, and grades nine to eleven, fifty points. And that's because they're doing the basic building blocks, so we expect more of a lexile growth in those primary grades. Next slide, please. This graph is just comparing our System 44 students. We are going to look first at Slatington, then middle school and high school. And I'm comparing the light blue is 2019, 2020, and the dark blue is twenty and twenty-one. When you look at the first one with Slatington, it looks like we've lost some ground. However, I will tell you that, looking at the numbers, we went from ten students in 2019 to twenty-seven students in 2020. And I attribute that to it being the second year of this program. We're identifying more students that have a greater need. If you look at the middle school, they've made a considerable gain in that grade level. And in the high school, the same. We look at Read 180, the next slide, please. You will see now, these are students that have already had those phonetic skills. They're doing more on decode, or less on decoding and more on comprehension. In Slatington, you'll see students went from three hundred and eighty-eight to six hundred and sixty, which is an increase of two hundred and seventy-two. And if you remember back at the other table, we're looking for a hundred and forty. So we made great increases there. Middle school, we're looking for less of an increase of about seventy. And when you look at middle school, we went from six fifty to seven twenty-three, which gives us an increase of seventy-three points. So we made good gains there. And then lastly is the high school, and the high school went from six seventy-four to seven twenty-one. And that was an increase of twenty-seven lexile points, and we're looking for about fifty. So we've almost made the same amount of gains in 2020 as we did in 2019. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm now going to walk us through some employee data as it relates to COVID-19 testing positive and quarantine cases. District-wide, we had a high of fifteen employees testing positive for COVID-19. In February, we had one employee test positive for COVID-19. And please remember, this includes all employee groups. This is how it's broken out by week. You'll see that our, our highest week kind of fits the trend for student cases that end of November, beginning of December timeframe is when we really start to see cases rise. We had six employees test positive the week of December seventh. We have had no employees take, test positive the last three school weeks. District-wide quarantines, we had a high of thirty-three in the weeks of December seventh and December fourteenth there. Last week, we had two employees on quarantine. Peters Elementary, the only thing, you can kind of read the data, it speaks for itself. The only thing I'm going to point out here is when you see a point five on any of these slides, that's representative of an employee who spends time in two buildings. So it's one employee, but the data needed to be reflected in two different buildings. Peters Elementary quarantine, they had a high of seven point five employees on quarantine in, on the week of December twelfth, the week that just ended, there's one employee on quarantine. Slatington Elementary, a high of four employees testing positive the week of December seventh. We've had no positive cases since December, the week of December twenty-first, right before winter break. Slatington Elementary quarantines, a high of fifteen point five employees on quarantine the week of December fourteenth. And we haven't had anybody on quarantine in Slatington since January twenty, the week of January twenty-fifth. Middle school, you'll see very, kind of, kind of reflective of the student data, if you recall. And middle school, and that also includes one employee that works in that building, that's an IU employee. Next, we had employee quarantine by week. Their highest week were, were weeks with three employees on quarantine. Most recently, the week that just ended, they have no employees on quarantine. High school, the highest week was two point five back on November sixteenth for employees testing positive. In this building, we had a mixture of employees being people directly employed by the district or the IU or a contracted employee, which is through like a, a third-party service provider. No employees testing positive since the week of January eighteenth. High school employee quarantine by week, nine point five employees on quarantine the week of November sixteenth. The week that just ended, we have one employee on quarantine. District office, week of December seventh, we had two people testing positive. In the week of the fourteenth, we had one. Quarantines, we had a high of six in mid-December, or the first half of December, rather, and zero employees on quarantine the last two weeks. Okay, up next, we're going to transition into parent survey results. We had seven hundred six respondents. We have one thousand five hundred fifteen students in the district as of today, attending our buildings. Parent survey, you can see that sixty-five percent of the parents want children, sixty-five percent of the respondents want children back in the, in the buildings four to five days a week. I'm sorry, yes, four to five days a week. Eighteen percent would like to continue in hybrid. Less than one percent in Bulldog Academy, and fifteen percent would like the five-day remote option. For Peters, that breaks down the following way. For Slatington. For the middle school. And for the high school. Okay, up next, we're going to talk about employee survey results. We had 198 respondents, there are 246 employees. All work groups were surveyed. This is the survey question concerning how they felt about their safety if we were to return to four to five days a week. You can see the spread there with very safe being 5%, up to 32% being very unsafe. Okay, employee survey results, 82% of the employees that responded said they would like to stay status quo. 18% said they would like to go four to five days in person. Okay, just a review of the recommended models from PDE and the CDC. PDE is recommending if your counties are in the substantial designation, which we are. We are below 10% for PCR percent positivity in both North Hampton and Lehigh Counties, but we're still above 100. An incident rate of 100 residents per 100,000. They're recommending that for the elementary buildings only, we do the blended or the hybrid learning model. And they're recommending that, or we do full remote learning model for all buildings. However, they're only recommending blended or hybrid for elementary schools. Earlier in February, the CDC recommended their instructional models. They add a different tier. So they have low transmission, moderate transmission, substantial transmission like Pennsylvania, but they have a fourth tier, which is high transmission or the red. Their breakdown is low transmission for new cases per 100,000 residents in the past seven days. Low transmission is zero to nine. Moderate transmission is 10 to 49 new cases. Substantial transmission is 50 to 99, and high transmission is above 100. So they broke up the moderate and substantial designations that we have in PDE here. And then to percent testing positive, low transmission is less than 5%. Moderate transmission is 5 to 7.9%. Substantial transmission is 8 to 9.9%. And high transmission in the red zone is equal to or greater than 10%. So for Lehigh and North Hampton County, again, both of our percentages are lower than 10%. But in each county, we're above the 100% of total new cases per 100,000. And you can see their recommended model there is for K-12 schools, a hybrid learning model or reduced attendance. Physical distance or six feet or more is required, is what they're recommending in their guidance. They're also recommending that when you're in the red, that sports and extracurricular activities are virtual only. Okay, some considerations for the school board as you come to making a motion tonight are some pros, cons, unknowns, and then some choices. Some pros, perceived pros to a four- to five-day per-week in-person instruction. Improve mental well-being for students, increase physical health for students, increase consistency in instructional model and routine if parents and guardians must commit for the remainder of the year. Reduce attendance enforcement challenges. We've heard a lot about attendance and the impact on learning this evening. Improve instruction and timely intervention for at-risk students. Increase the opportunity for social interaction and social skills. Improve the ability to monitor and respond to student mental health and safety needs more directly. Increase time available to plan for instructional differentiation for students. Increase meal participation for students that suffer from meal insecurity. And decrease logistical barriers associated with standardized test administration. It frustrates me that I have to put that one in there. We should not have to talk about standardized testing currently. Perceived cons to a four- to five-day model per day, four to five days per week in-person instruction. Decreases our ability to maintain six-feet social distancing. Increases bus seating capacity to one to two students per seat. Increases the number of students impacted by quarantine requirements resulting from inability to maintain six-feet distancing. That's a direct result of how they classify who is considered a close contact. Require significant rescheduling of students to reach the greatest social distancing. Require additional changes in procedures and programming for students who remain virtual. If we go to the four- to five-day per-week in-person instructional model, the five-day online model is going to look different because of how we have to redeploy staffing. Increase reliance on non-instructional areas for instructional purposes. That's the physical spaces within the building. Increase the responsibilities of already stretched-in custodial staff. Increase the staffing challenges presented by both substitute shortages and quarantine requirements. And require funding diverted away from instructional needs to address additional safety requirements. I will kind of qualify that with that there is some talk recently of a third wave of federal funding to be released. We do not have details on that yet. Unknowns, what impact will switching to a four- to five-day in-person option have on the current instructional practices? Will a four- to five-day in-person option lead to more students going virtual? Will the four- to five-day in-person option lead to more availability or less availability of substitutes? You could argue it either way, depending on how people feel about being back in the buildings, substitutes, that is. We will need to switch to fully remote instruction surrounding, will we, meters? Switch to fully remote instruction surrounding holiday periods? Or through requirements of the attestation agreement? What that means is as soon as we hit two cases in a building, we don't have a choice, no matter what model we're in. We have to go fully remote from anywhere from three to 14 days. We don't know, and I have to say, our students have been phenomenal with compliance for face coverings. We would hope that would continue if we are back four to five days a week. Will families satisfied with a hybrid instruction seek a non-NLSD option in response to this? When will the vaccines be given to education workers and potentially older students? Will moving to the four- to five-day in-person option cause more instability because students and/or employees will have to quarantine more often when someone gets sick? Again, that goes back to less than six feet social distancing and how a close contact is defined. And then how will this impact the excesses that we have had if the results in increased quarantines are building shutdowns? So there are some pros, there are some cons, there are some unknowns. The unknowns, we won't know until we would actually see how many children would be back in the building, if that's the direction the school board would decide to go. Some options for the school board to consider are some choices. Maintain status quo for the remainder of the year. All currently available instructional models would remain. Transition to a four- to five-day in-person option once Phase B, I'm sorry, once Phase 1B is open for education workers to be vaccinated. Implement a phased return to four to five days in-person option by grade spans, such as, for example, K-2, 3-4, 5-6, and so on. Or by building, through all that, while allowing the vulnerable students. So those are our students that are currently allowed in four to five days to continue with the four- to five-day in-person instruction. And then the last choice would be to return all students to four to five days in-person options simultaneously. That concludes our presentation this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present that to everyone, and thank you to everybody that had input in building that presentation. At this point, that concludes my report this evening, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Fedorcha for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Link, and thank you administrators for participating and putting all this together for us tonight. It is a lot, it's a very serious thing, and I do want to thank you very much for that. What I would like to do at this point is I would open up now to the board for any questions of Mr. Link, to have any comments. And certainly, if someone would have a motion, I certainly would accept a motion at that time. I'm open now for discussion, so if you just kind of, one at a time, if you do have questions, though, or whatever. Board, that's open to you now.
Mr. Fedorcha, it's Donna Culp. I have a question for Mr. Link. Can you tell me how many students are in a classroom now compared to how many students we think will want to be in school for the four or five days? By grade level?
Sure, I can let the building principals speak to how many students are, you know, in the classroom on average by grade level currently, and then what that may look like if the trends, so in other words, if out of the respondents, if we were to extrapolate that up to the total number of students in the district, if it would follow the same percentages. We won't know that answer for sure until parents are asked to commit to a model. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Schneider, if you can describe what that looks like in your building, please.
Sure, hello, Mrs. Culp. Right now, the average class size, of course, there's some variation between the classes. And considering, looking at both the A group and the B group, the average class size in second grade is between 25 and 26 students. The average class size in first grade is between 20 and 21 students. And the average class size in kindergarten is right around 18 students. With that, most of them are pretty much cut in half. We're looking at between, let's say, 13 to 15 kids in second grade right now in the hybrid model. You know, I would say between 9, 11 or so in the first grade and right around 9 or so in kindergarten. Again, making some assumptions based on the data we have. And, you know, without knowing, of course, what that final choice would look like and how many people would commit to fully remote or commit to coming back to school for four or five days. My anticipated numbers, it would look like a class size of approximately 23 in second grade. Approximately, I think it was 16 in first grade, and approximately right around 15 or 16 in kindergarten.
Mr. Schneider, how many students are currently in the classroom? Like, I know we have more than one kindergarten class, we have more than one first-grade class. How many students, when you have this hybrid model, are actually in a classroom?
At any given time, it's between eight to 10 students at the max. And again, that's in the Group A or Group B. It depends on which day of the week it is.
Is there additional room to maintain six feet in any of those classrooms?
It's my assumption that, based on the numbers we have and making a lot of assumptions based on speculations, based on the surveys, it looks like we would not be able to keep six feet in any grade level. We will be very close in kindergarten. It's certainly possible in kindergarten, depending on how many students choose to remain virtual. First grade, it's likely to be between four to five feet. And in second grade, which is the grade with the largest class size and also the least amount of teachers, we would likely be between, again, making a total guess based on assumptions on the data, between three and four feet within the classroom.
Are there any empty classrooms at Peters?
If there were extra staff available, we would be able to find some spaces. There's not like three empty rooms just available to go in at any given time. But we do have some empty spaces, which, you know, we could make work if that were possible.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Schneider, what would those spaces be? Can you just describe kind of more of what you're talking about?
Sure, we have a first-grade kindergarten lab that previously was used as a large-group instructional space. If you recall, the board voted, I believe it was two, perhaps three months ago, to allow that space to be converted for a second IU room. At this time, that has not happened. So right now, that room remains empty. But eventually, and I'm not sure Mrs. Data could probably speak to what that commitment looks like, but we're committed, if they need that room, to basically provide that. And I think that was already board-approved months ago. But as of right now, that room is used, but we would be able to move things around in there, and that would be an availability. There's other very small spaces. For instance, we have rooms that are not used all day. We have a room that was formerly shared by Nolton Diagnostics, as well as our OT. You know, Ms. Tackix, who comes in and works with students, that's not used all day, but that is a very small space. So I wouldn't consider that necessarily a large-group classroom, but it's certainly somewhere where there would be some, you know, perhaps potential flexibility there. You know, we have a kindergarten computer lab, which right now would need a little bit of some organization. But right now, we can possibly, again, turn that into an extra instructional space. And I'm sorry, I could also add, we do have a second-grade computer lab as well. That also, it's tricky because there's also a copier that's very widely used by teachers. That would be my last choice to use as an instructional space just because, you know, we only have two copiers in the building, and that's one of them. So that would take away the ability for teachers to make copies. So I would utilize those other spaces first, but that would also be a potential availability upstairs.
Anyone else? Moving on to Slatington Elementary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. Slatington Elementary right now, average, the whole.
Mr. Pine, excuse me, I'm sorry. Unless it's just me, everything is very blurry. I really cannot understand. Does anyone else have that problem? Or is it only me? And if it's only me, I won't let that go.
I have the same issue.
I can't hear him either.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what we can do about changing that.
I'm trying to go back to my computer. Right now, I'm on my phone. I don't know why I have this master problem.
Mr. Link, can we just move on to the middle school first and then come back?
Sure, let's go to the middle school. Circle back down to Mr. Pine.
Hello. Right now, if you're, when we're looking at the hybrid model, you'll find, of course, we're a little different. We do have movement. Any of our core area classes could be anywhere from 13 to 15 kids on a hybrid day. So that means if we bring them back, I would have classes that run anywhere from 28 to 30, 26 to 30, depending on the class size. That would not give a six-foot. Prior to us going to hybrid, we could do three-feet space, but not six feet in the middle school in any of our classrooms. Some of the larger classrooms, I would have to look at utilizing different areas, i.e. the library and/or the auditorium to hold classes. At this time, I also need to maintain the six-foot space for everyone in my cafeteria, would have to revamp the way we do cafeteria right now. But that is because our numbers are at high in seventh grade. Eighth grade, they are a little bit lower, but it would still mean the same thing. So hopefully, that answered the questions regarding the numbers.
Thank you, Mrs. Chamberlain.
Mr. Link. Chamberlain, Mr. Hauser, can you speak to the high school?
Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Link, thank you, Mr. Fedorcha and others. Very much like Mrs. Chamberlain, the high school is, again, very much the same. I'll echo her comments. Because the high school, though, is departmentalized, and we do have core subjects and electives, I think many of our electives, we might be able to be under 20 students, even if we have all students come back. Presently, under hybrid, we do have some elective courses that are functioning with single-digit enrollment. some elective courses that are functioning with single-digit enrollment in the classroom on Mondays and Tuesdays, and single digits on Thursdays and Fridays. Combining them, we might be under 20. That said, there are several classes, particularly in our core subject areas, where we are going to exceed 20 and potentially get into the mid to upper 20s. Both in the size of our average classroom, I do not believe we would be able to have six feet of social distancing. Very likely, we could get to three feet of social distancing. I'm very confident we could do that in any of our classrooms, but six feet in core subjects is not, is not feasible. Mr. Velacity and I have, at multiple points in the year, looked at alternate areas, like our library and our auditorium, or possibly, you know, moving court, moving classes to these alternate areas. We will also need to readdress the cafeteria situation. Presently, in the cafeteria, we do have the tables divided up of plexiglass. However, depending on how our three lunch periods would fall when it comes to student enrollment, we may have to look at alternate areas, our back hallway, what used to be the chorus room, the auditorium stage as alternate eating areas as well. So again, very much like the middle school in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. It looks like Mr. Pine has properly relocated, so we'll give him another, another try.
Please tell me you can hear me. Not garbled. Okay. I apologize again. My, my daughter plays video games in that room that I was in and streams them, and has never had an issue. I've never had an issue. I don't know what's going on. So the numbers for Sladeington Elementary, if we're looking at the average class size in terms of, you know, students in a classroom right now, in third grade, we're at about 13 to 14, and fourth grade is the same, 13 to 14. When we get to fifth grade, we have 16 in a classroom right now. There are reasons for that, that hopefully will, you know, come to resolve themselves. But I feel comfortable giving that answer, because that's what we have right now. And in sixth grade, we have 15 students in the classroom right now. And just to give you an idea of, in terms of maintaining six feet, I measured out and planned out the configuration for every room. There's one room where there's an exception to this that, that I've been able to find, but at 16, we are six feet apart from desk to desk, from student body to student body. If we exceed 16, we will be coming in on under six feet. What that number will be, I, I mean, I can't say without having exact numbers, but right now, if I looked at third grade, and I kind of ran these two ways. One, if we were to have all students who are currently virtual divided up and integrated into the classroom, so that we could make use of that space and that teacher in order to staff an additional teacher at each grade level. And then the other number is if we don't do that, you know, and so the first number is, so if we keep a dedicated virtual classroom, virtual teacher throughout the course of the day, we'd end up with 22 in third grade, this is an estimation, just based on the survey results, 22, 25 in fourth, 25 in the good situation, fifth grade, 33 in the situation that we're in right now, which is a staffing issue. And then 26 in sixth grade, that's if we have teachers who are dedicated to have those virtual groups. If we don't, if we do divide all of them up, in third grade, we would end up with 18 students. So again, certainly above 16, fourth grade, 20. And again, in the good situation, 20 in fifth grade, in the not so good situation, 25, and then in sixth grade, 20. So again, that's if we take all the virtual students and we blend them among the existing staff in the classrooms. Oh, and in terms of spaces, I mean, off the top of my head, I, we have an auxiliary to the gym. I've not measured out how many students could actually fit in there. We do have two computer labs, and I do know that that would probably be, just because they have stationary furniture in them, the tables are all bolted, and that creates a little less flexibility in terms of configuring the room, we would end up with, it would actually be under 16. It's somewhere between 14 and 15, if we were going to actually space them all out. I hope I caught everything there.
Thank you, Mr. Pine.
Okay. Mr. Link, can I just ask a question? This Gary. I'm hearing that we could accommodate things if we had used extra spaces. At this point, though, those extra spaces would also require us to have to hire more instructors or more teachers. Is that correct?
Yes, but just let me clarify that. Even if we use other spaces, until we know what the actual numbers of children in the schools would be, that that does not mean that we would be at six feet, even if we use extra spaces. Every, every building's kind of physical capacity is different. So we may be able to lower the density of students in rooms, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to hit six feet if we're using extra spaces.
But that doesn't mean that we would still have to hire additional staff?
We have to have people to monitor the children or monitor the students in the rooms. So yes, we would have to have more staff to monitor the students that are actually physically in, you know, spread out spaces throughout the building.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
While we're talking about staffing, can we just touch upon how this would affect custodial staff? Because if there's more students in the building on any particular day closer together, logistically, that's going to have an effect, but also more desks in a room, I think, is going to slow them down.
That's our interpretation of it, Mrs. Heckman. We would have to more people in the building create more surfaces that we would have to sanitize and more cleaning to do on a daily basis. And right now, even if we were to say, well, let's just bring in all of our subs every day, we have no subs to bring in. We've currently been using people in other positions, non-custodial positions, to, to help us with this. We've expanded their hours in many cases and kind of redesignated what they do to go through the, go through the buildings and help us clean.
Any, any other questions?
I do have a follow-up question. So obviously, we want to clean. The goal is to always to do what we're doing, and if anyone would come back further to do what we're doing, but in that new environment. Are we under any obligation in either the attestation or are we under any obligation to clean at a certain frequency? Or do you understand my question?
There is not a law that says we have to clean at a, I'm sorry, you look like you're still talking.
No, she is not.
Okay. There is not a law that says we have to clean at a certain frequency. The attestation addresses face covering requirements, and it requests positive cases in a building based on the size of the building. I would say that best practices and what we want to be able to do for our students and employees and any visitors that may be in the building is to have these most sanitized, cleaned environment for them to come into.
Absolutely. I'm in no way suggesting that we should not clean. I'm just asking if we are required by anything law, recommendation from CDC, anything that we signed in the last six months. Thank you. That answers my question.
Sure.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Are you up for different questions or follow-up to Mrs. Heckman?
I'm, I'm sorry, Gail, what?
Are you looking for follow-up to Mrs. Heckman or just in general, further comment?
I don't, I don't think she asked for, I'm, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to step on anybody's toes if anybody.
No, I think, I think you went to that point. So yes, Gail, please.
All right. So I do have a lot of questions, actually, and want to thank the administration, the community that came out, the teachers that came out, the staff, the teacher, and the board that's here, as we really took the very first step to a true collaboration, which, in my opinion, has been long missed. We missed a lot of the, the individuals in what we were doing. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for those that came out and voiced, voiced their choices of the good, the bad, and the ugly, and where we are. I look at what Northern Lehigh's mission statement is, that our administration, our staff, our board approved at the beginning of this school year. One of them in particularly is to create a challenging and supportive environment dedicated to meeting diverse educational needs of all learners. Part of those items include achievement and growth of students and staff, including professional development, culture, climate, instructional technology, and district operations. So based on some of the metrics that we were seeing and what that is, I feel we are truly not meeting some of those goals in whole. And I'm asking for some help to identify how to do that. I heard from the community that individuals are, are having to make a choice between what to do with their children, if we're going to put food on the table, or send a child to school, or help educate. I've heard from teachers about the safety and the protocols that we're putting in place for their safety in order to come in and continue to educate our students, and what we're doing to improve that. And I believe that we, as a district, have to stop following what others are doing and start to take a lead in some of these actions that we're talking about, because I truly believe that we are letting our students, our community, and our staff down. I ask for a couple of things here. Other schools have put in place choices to move forward, to bring our student, their students and staff back in a safe way. Are we thinking out of the side of the box? Are we thinking about how we're going to do that? Did we ask our staff if we wanted to bring these students back? What do we need to do if we can't add teachers, or we can't add additional buildings, or we can't just put up a new building because of COVID? Did we look at putting up plexiglass around desks for individual students in order to be less than six feet apart? Because based on CDC and Department of Health, it says when applicable. To the best of our ability, absolutely, we want to make sure that our students and staff are safe at all times. Agreed, 100% important. I saw in our charts that our attendance has declined from our students, where we're seeing truancy top level. And I question, is it students coming into school that are a hybrid, that they're missing hybrid days coming in? Are they choosing not to show up because they're fully virtual, because their parents aren't able to, to have them be there because they need to make a different decision? I look at, again, the choice of healthcare and costs, and what is that, what does that mean to our community? We're in a community that we have to help each other. And how do we do that and collaborate differently? So again, thank you for doing that, because this is the first start of that, which, in my opinion, should have happened months ago. I ask how many students actually have left our district, or have gone to a charter or cyber school, or a private school, or a brick and mortar outside of our own building that we're not able to service as the community? And how do we get those students back? And I kind of look at the data and the, the numbers in regards to our specific ZIP codes here in Lehigh and Northampton County. When we look at Lehigh and Northampton County, it takes large inner-city ZIP codes with large demographics and numbers that add to the number that we're at, that puts us into a different range. Looking at some, what some of those are, there were 15 and 17 new cases in Lehigh and Northampton County based on our two ZIP codes that we have, across hundreds of thousands of individuals in our, in our area. So I look to ask, at this point, what have we talked about as a district differently? And how do we get these students the education that they are needing, both on a mental side, a social side, and to show achievement and growth based on what we put and signed that we said these are our missions for this school year? How do we help change that? The numbers are going to tell us what we want them to, but how do we do it? That's the question. And that's the question to administration. What, what do we have to do in order to get these kids back to school? And I'm not sure that we're answering a question in, in anything that we're talking about tonight. So I'm looking for a little bit more than, are we going back four or five days? And it's more about how we're going to do it, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Husak. So yes, we talk all the time about what is it going to look like when children come back? It's going to look different in each building, and it's going to look different in each classroom. And what drives that is how many children are actually going to be in those spaces. And then how are we going to manipulate those spaces to ensure safety while continuing education? Our biggest barrier right now is we can do the face covering, we can do the sanitizing, we can do the hand washing, we can do the teaching the students and staff the best ways to mitigate it, the spread of the virus. Our biggest challenge right now comes down to social distancing. So we need to make a collective decision as to what are we comfortable with when it comes to social distancing. Once we have that direction, then we're going to go put a plan in place to say, this is how the students are going to be arranged throughout the buildings. This is what lunches are going to look like. This is what breakfast is going to look like. This is what we're going to have to do to, we're going to have to take this space offline for what it's typically been used for and put students in there to learn. If we don't have enough staff, we're going to have to work on trying to get more staff to come in. That's going to be probably our second biggest barrier is available staff. If we post the positions, we have to have people that want to be able to come in. We're more than ready to post them. We need to work through social distancing, and we need to work through what happens if we, if we need to add more staff, but there's no more staff available.
Mr. Link, I mean, I guess if my, my question would be, if we add staff, where would that money come from?
We would have to access the federal funds that are available. These would have to be temporary positions, or at least reevaluate it at the end of the school year, going into the fall, when we can have a better idea of what the fall may look like.
Okay, thank you.
But those monies, those monies would have to come from federal dollars through the S R relief funds.
Mr. Link, this is Mrs. Martino. Can you hear me?
I can, Mrs. Martino.
So I, I see the four choices here on the slide, and I'm not sure that any of those choices quite fits. Have we thought about, sort of like Gail mentioned, the thinking outside the box options, like temporary emergency certified positions in, you know, rented mobile units, or like some of the other schools have, or the kids that are in those graphs that are struggling, the ones that are failing some of those courses? Have we thought about being able to bring them back, you know, four or five days a week as a, you know, precursor to the transition back to full-time school? Could we start looking at some of the steps toward doing that? Has any of that been bandied about?
Sure, I'll kind of start towards the end there with the idea of the most at-risk students. Many of them are, are in the buildings already four to five, four to five days a week. If that's, you know, if their parents and guardians decided to do that, students with special needs, English language learners, you know, those, those types of students, students that are, don't fit into those categories. But if we would want to bring them back soon, sooner than, say, than the, the students that are currently performing on level, we could do that. That would be an option within the phased return model, which is the third bullet there.
Yes, those are the, I wasn't referring, I'm sorry, I didn't break that out. I wasn't referring to the English language learners and the IEP students. I was referring to, you know, your average student that is failing math, or failing English, or failing something that obviously is not, you know, succeeding in the blinding screen environment. And, you know, if we can identify them, if, you know, and pull them back into the fold, we have room for them, I would say, I think.
We could look at doing a phased return for however we want to break out the students, whether it's by grade level, by building level, by student group. And then we would then look to manipulate the physical space to accommodate the greatest social distancing distancing possible. And then we would then look to manipulate the physical space to accommodate the greatest social distancing, distancing possible.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, this is Bob Keegan. I'd like to put in my two cents.
Go ahead, Mr. Keegan. Yes.
Okay. I'm going to call the question. We've been talking about this. The community needs options. So what I'm going to do is create a motion. I want to return all students in person four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday's virtual cleaning day, Thursday, Friday. We continue all the other options, so all parents and students have choices. We don't put out anything else, and that's related to your fourth or bottom bullet. That's the motion I'm putting in. I need a second.
Bob Kern here. I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Go ahead, Bob. Oh, I thought you were going to say something, Bob. I'll, I'll put my three cents in too, Mr. Keegan. It's funny, my wife and I were talking earlier this week, and she said, you know what, I'm really tired of zooming. And I said, really? And she said, yeah. And I said, you know what, you and I zoom maybe three, four times a week, maybe a total of six, eight hours a week, something like that, and we're tired of it. Think about your daughter who zooms 10, 12 hours. It has a result of her job. Think of a third grader or a second grader out of Peters who is on a computer for five or six hours a day. Do you think they're kind of getting tired of it too? And, and, and I think the answer is yes, they are. Very much so. If, if we're getting tired of it, I can, I can't imagine what they're going through. I can't imagine what their parents are going through. So I, I agree with your assessment of getting the kids back to school, the students, excuse me, I keep calling them kids, back to school. Four days a week as soon as possible. I agree with that. My, my concern is I'm still not quite sure how we're going to make that happen, and, and, and I'll get to that. It's not just as easy, just easy to say, well, we have a cafeteria, let's, let's put kids in the cafeteria. Well, you can't just take two third graders and two fourth graders and two kids here and, and put them in another class in the cafeteria. It's, it's not going to work. So while I very much favor bringing the kids back, I'm willing to say at this point, I'm willing to stay where we are until our next meeting next Monday. And by next Monday, I would like to see the administration have a plan on how we're going to get back together for that four or five day work week. I, I'm kind of talking about what Mrs. Husak said earlier. We, we, we need a plan. We can't just say, do it. We have to have a plan for the administration that we can look at. And we, 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 we just, we just need to have a little bit better example, but I do want to see the kids coming back in school. However, safety, and I've said this from day one, is still important, you know. You want a choice to send your children back to school. I understand that. But what about the faculty? What about the cafeteria staff? They don't have a choice. They either quit their job or they have to come in. It's a little bit more difficult for them. I support your motion, and, and I do want to see the students come back. I do want to see option four. But I think at the same time, there needs to be a message sent to administration that by next Monday, I don't care what else you're doing the rest of the week, you've got to come up with a good, firm, solid plan on how we're going to do this. And we need to look at that next Monday before we actually say, bring the children back. That's my three cents.
Anyone else?
I do. I have a question. If this was something that we would vote in this evening, return all students to a four day in person option simultaneously, is it? We talked about the individuals that would choose to stay virtual, the virtual stu-, the students that are doing virtual now that would stay virtual moving forward. During this presentation, what I heard was their format's going to change. Things are going to be changing for them, even though their choice has not changed. Can someone, can we talk about that?
Sure. What I'm going to do is let, let the building principals describe what that would look like at their building level, because we've been talking a lot about this recently and some different options that may be available if the board were to vote to bring students back four to five days a week. I would like to quickly just say, though, that if we're going to do it, thank you for saying no Wednesdays, right? Just doing it four days because we still need that time to be able to clean and to plan for multiple modalities of instruction. I would also say that two weeks, I would ask for two weeks, not one week, I would ask for two weeks to be able to implement such a plan. So I'm going to ask that all board members consider that as well. That being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schneiderite to talk about the how the virtual instruction may look differently if students were to come back four to five days.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Hello again, everyone. Just a, just a reminder of what we do now. Right now, we have one teacher at every grade level, K one and two, dedicated to teaching just five day virtual students. Everybody else, all other teachers in the building are teaching, teaching hybrid students. So, you know, again, I don't know what the board is going to decide, but I'm going to, making some assumptions. Likely, we would try to, you know, we would keep the live streaming going because what happens when a student has to go on quarantine? What are the options for that kid? So when I make an assumption, I'm, I'm trying to sort of predict. It really is once again dependent on how many students decide to remain five day virtual and one, and which, and how many students decide to come back into school. So the two things that I'm thinking through right now are, if I have a class size and I'll use second grade. Right now, my second grade class size is approximately between 25 and 26 students with the five day virtual teacher teaching, I believe it's 26 students, it's either 26 or 27, it's right around class average. If only nine of those students decide to remain five day virtual and the rest want to come back into school, what that would then look like is one teacher teaching nine virtual kids while the rest of the second grade has like 30 plus kids per grade. So obviously, when we're prioritizing safety, that's a big issue. Again, if there are, if it remains class, about class size or better, you know, we would look at that option. So as Mr. Pine said a little bit earlier, the, the big options are either A, trying to keep every student with the teacher they're in and hoping that we remain at a level which is safe for everyone. The other option is a, a more challenging option, but it's probably a safer option, which would be basically to, once this, the parents determine who is coming back and who is not, who is going to be remaining five day virtual, then rescheduling the entire school to ensure that every class size is of optimal optimal size, and then embedding those students that are remaining virtual within. What that would look like is, is probably, and just taking a guess, half the school or more of the entire school, you know, at this point, having a different teacher than they do now. You know, which obviously is a challenge at any grade level, but K through two is probably a bigger challenge. But that would ensure safety of students and, you know, it would be the optimal for safety. What's the best for the students? Likely, the best for the students educationally would be to try to keep them with that teacher. But again, it really is dependent on class sizes. So we're talking about what would that five day virtual look like? If we're now removing the five day virtual teacher, making them a classroom teacher, and redistributing students for safety, what that would likely look like is teachers are live streaming. Right now, we're providing both live streaming and asynchronous work. So that offers flexibility for families. So if they couldn't make the live stream, they can watch the video of that streamlined with the teachers delivering, again, streamlined, rehearsed, perfect instruction to those, those families. It would then look like those who remain in the five day virtual model, they could still live stream into the classroom. But if they, if they were not able to do that, and they needed that flexibility, the teacher would have to post a portion of their lesson from the class that day and put that online. So again, that's a different model than is currently going on. I don't want to speak for the parents within that model, but I know that many have reached out to me and they like what we're doing now. Depending on classes, that's likely the big change.
I have a flex streaming is happening all across the state. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Snyder, right? And I agree that that's an option that they have to have. But let's go back to the data. The data said how much percentage of our parents want to come back. So we know pretty much how many kids are coming back. So let's get prepared. I have every confidence that our administration and our teachers can pull this off. And two weeks is great, Mr. Link. I think that's great. But I'm going to pull Robert's Rules of Order, call the question, Mr. President.
There is a motion to call the question. Do I have a second?
Bob, that was already seconded.
No, no, you're asking to call the question, sir.
Yeah.
We need to close debate. I, I need a second. And we need to vote. Okay, all those in favor of closing debate? Please say aye. All right, I'm sorry.
You got to do a roll call.
Yes, we got to do a roll call. I, yes, I, I stopped myself right away. Gail, roll call, and this is to close debate.
This is roll call to close debate. Mr. Disler.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
No.
Ms. Heckman.
No.
Ms. Husak. No. Mr. Keegan.
Bob?
Mr. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Ms. Culp.
No.
Ms. Martino.
No.
Mr. Fedorcha.
No.
Motion does not pass.
Mr. Fedorcha, I'd like to ask a clarifying question to Mr. Keegan. Mr. Keegan, you said towards the end of your comments there before you called the question. You know, two weeks, great. Were you implying to, to have it go to two weeks in the motion that you made? Or were you implying to stick with the one week like you initially said?
I didn't say a week. I didn't say two weeks in my motion. I just said that we move forward with the four day program. I outlined that. You talked about two weeks, having a plan ready. I'm fine with two weeks to having a plan ready and with a start date.
Thank you. I must have misheard that. I thought somebody said within a week being next school board meeting. Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Keegan, and, and I said I agree with you. Would, would you be willing to accept an amendment that would say something to the fact that we will remain on the current plan for two weeks? And have another meeting in two weeks for have the administration tell us any reason why it's not possible to do that? And if they don't, or don't come up with a plan, we move ahead with that in two weeks? Are, are you comfortable with that time period?
Well, obviously, if we're going to give them two weeks to have a plan and present it, we would have to continue what we're doing now. That, that wouldn't change for our kids, our families.
Would you support my request to have a special meeting then on the second Monday also? I think it's the second Monday, whatever that date is.
What, to hear the plan? Or to vote on the plan?
To hear and vote on the plan.
I could accept that.
This is Bob Kern. Let me weigh in. I, you know, I'm, I'm listening to what Matt's saying, and, and, and I, I just feel we keep kicking this issue down the road, you know, like kicking the can further away. You know, why don't we just wait till May and then we'll be out of school five weeks? I mean, you know, we need to do something. And, and I'm telling you firsthand, as a grandfather who worked with a virtual student three days a week, it is a all encompassing chore. And for those board members who don't know what it's like sitting at a table for six hours, going through virtual and live stream instruction with your little one, it is quite, and I only have one. I can't even imagine having two or three like some of the parents that we've had. It is quite, quite challenging, and I'm an ex educator of 36.8 years. So my granddaughter has an advantage because she has an educator sitting next to her. I observe what goes on in all of these Google meets. It's amazing what is not occurring. Just because a kid is online and is involved in, in, in the streaming of learning, doesn't mean learning is taking place. I've seen students hanging upside down on their bunk beds. I've had parents cursing in the background on unmuted mics. I've had parents who would, in the middle of a live stream, break in a discussion and say, we're leaving, we have to go because I have to go check out my pregnancy test. I, I've heard all sorts of things that are noneducational. This is not the right environment. The haves are getting what they need, the have nots are falling further and further behind. And I'm just speaking from my chair. Our kids need to be in school, and whatever it takes to do that, and I, and I'm, I'm even ready to say five days a week, but I'll settle for four. But I am a no vote until we bring our kids back for at least four days a week. That's my, been my opinion. I've been stating it. We could find other safety procedures. There are a lot of people in life, including my wife, who is a nurse, that are firsthand responders. They are essential workers, and they find a way to stay safe. I, as an educator, would make sure my butt was in that seat, teaching those kids, because that's what I'm paid to do. And I'm not paid to use it, do it virtually, because we all know technology is a resource. It is there to enhance learning. It is not designed to be the learning tool. That's why our kids want to come back. That's why our parents want the kids to come back, because we know that teachers are where it happens, where the rubber meets the road. That's education firsthand with the teacher present. Thank you.
This is Rob, and I listened to Bob's comment, and I also am a grandfather of three granddaughters. Unfortunately, not in Northern Lehigh School District, but in a neighboring school district. I've, I've sat with those quite frequently. It ranges from kindergarten, first grade, to fourth grade. And it seems like some reason he adapted very well with the program that's in front of them. I don't know if Northern Lehigh has a best qualified program and what our neighboring school district has. I'm, I'm sure that those teachers in Northern Lehigh are doing as that they can, as well as what they're doing in our neighboring district. So I would agree with what Bob's saying.
I, I am not. I am not saying.
Stop. Everybody gets courtesy to speak. Right now, Robin is speaking. I
I, I can't hear Robin, Gary. I, I
No, I, that's fine. Robin, can you speak up a little bit?
I will try, but I listened to the suggestion that yeah. Mr. Green gave, and I'm going to agree with that, trying to get our students back. I like to, I like to see my grandchildren back in school to get the more social advantage to this whole thing besides our education, and it all mixes well with one another. I agree with Mr. Green. We should go back four days a week, add the one day for cleaning. We also have to have our administration have a certain period of time to gather all that from other administrations in the buildings, so we can get a, a plan together, listen, and have feedback what they decide to have. And I, I think that we just should not bring them back because a lot of parents would like to have their students back in school five days. All I have to say.
Mr. Kern?
Thank you. Robin, I just want to say I am in no way inferring that our teachers at Northern Lehigh aren't doing a great job. That is not my issue. They have done a miraculous job from what we started with last year to where we are now. And I see their efforts clearly. Trust me, it's what I did. It's what I am definitely an expert in, in digital learning. So I can see the progressions we made, and we have a long way to go. That is not my point. I think our teachers are working twice as hard, and our administrators, than they would in a traditional setting. So that, if, if it comes out that I'm implying that, I apologize, because that is not my intent whatsoever. What I am saying is I see the frustration that is occurring in our parents' voices that spoke tonight, both for and against. This is an emotional, highly emotional decision, but I just think we need to give our parents options. options. And if a parent wants to keep their child in virtual, so be it. But I'm hearing a lot of parents in the survey saying, we want our kids back to school. And I think if we would do a survey on our middle school and our high school students, I think you're going to find the same results. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
If I may back up, I didn't mean anything, always speaking my piece, I didn't anything against anything that you had said. That's your opinion. You even stated that when you were finished, and that was my statement. So I apologize if you felt offended by what I had said. I do believe the same thing. Parents are at a point where they need to, they all need to have their children back in the school, but they also have to realize that it takes time, it takes effort to do that, and we can't do it at the top of the pin. So there's a lot of work behind that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Mr. Fedorcha?
Okay, Mrs. Martino?
Thank you.
And then Mrs. Heckman, so just so we know where we're going here, please. Go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to ask if we can, you know, instead of, if we can meet everybody halfway somewhere, if we could at least start some positive motion in the direction of getting the kids back. My question about identifying quickly these students that are failing and ask their parents if they would want them back in the school. We can fit them right now. If those numbers are accurate, and I think that obviously they are coming from the administrators, and I, I don't have any problem with returning kids four days a week. But I'd like to see what that would look like in the phased approach and the choices we've been given. How quickly would that happen? Is that, you know, week to week? Or because, as everybody's pointed out, we don't have that much time left in the school year. And if the high school's coming back to school the last week of May, it really makes no difference. So I guess I'm just asking, what is this going to look like? And how soon can we get started, even with the first step? It just takes the first step.
Mrs. Martino, I would request that we have two weeks before we start bringing groups of students back. I would recommend that if we're going to do that, we start with the primary grades, not just at-risk student groups. I would suggest we start with the primary grades on the first day of that second week. By primary, I'm saying I'm targeting Peters Elementary School. And then I would roll it up from there, one-week increments. Slatington being next, possibly three to four, and then five to six. If not, then Slatington. I would then recommend middle school and then high school. I would be most comfortable with that. However, I would not necessarily be strongly opposed to doing middle school and high school at the same time. So in other words, two weeks, first group of students come back, looking at Peters Elementary School, then Slatington, and then either the middle school and high school or middle school and high school at the same time.
And I believe one of the parents asked, I'm sorry if I'm stepping on what you were saying, one of the parents asked, are we allowed to resubmit the attestation statement? Is that an option for us? Like if we can tell them what our current, our new plan is going to be?
Well, we would still be operating under the current attestation statement. No matter what model we're in, we still have to follow the face covering guidelines.
Oh, okay, okay.
That if two students, or I'm sorry, two cases in any building, because we're considered small schools, occur within the same 14 days, we would have to close that building for three to 14 days.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Okay. Michelle, Mrs. Heckman, please. You had a question.
I did have a question, and it was actually going to be what is administration's recommendation, but Mr. Link beat me to it. I want to be upfront, I am not in favor of sending everyone back four days in person at the same time. I'm 100% in favor of a phase-in, starting with Peters Elementary, the way that Mr. Link described it. Peters Elementary, then Slatington, I think middle school and high school at the same time is also reasonable. But I think that Peters getting back in person, at this point, feels the most critical to me. So that was going to be my question. That's my comment, because I already got the answer.
Thank you.
Agreed. I agree with Mrs. Heckman.
No, actually, so can we talk, we might not have the answer to my question right now, but how many additional staff per building would be required? Just ballpark it to accomplish something like this.
Before you answer, Mr. Link, also, I know we're looking at this, but in order to answer even Mrs. Heckman's question, would we not have to first, and this could be a little time consuming also, survey the parents to see how many that want to come back full-time, particularly because if they don't and they want to go virtual, it could change the numbers, number one. And also, if we have, let's say, right now, we have 100, I'm just throwing that number out, if you may, virtual students right now in, say, K through six. And we now have another 100 kids who want to, because parents are saying, no, they're not, you know, I'm not sending them back, or whatever. Do we not have to have a survey of that first before we can start putting the numbers? That's all I'm asking.
Sure, that's a good question. That survey's already drafted, sir. We have a 9:30 meeting tomorrow morning, so we could debrief the outcome of this meeting tonight, knowing that we have several different choices that the board may be able to approve. We've been working ahead. We have a survey drafted that could be used for whatever the decision is tonight, whether it's by building, by grade level, all at once. Some of the language in that survey is, this is your commitment for the rest of the school year. So in other words, we're not going to allow a two-week, I want to try a different model. The hybrid model would be removed, it would no longer exist. It would be in-person. I'm recommending four days a week. I'm recommending, if that's the choice, you're going to bring students back four days a week, and I'm recommending a phased approach. We would tell parents and guardians that you're committing to this for the remainder of the school year, barring a mandated shutdown from PDE or the Department of Health because of the attestation statement, or for some reason they find another reason to say all schools have to shut down. We would not look to allow the two weeks, try a model for two weeks and then go back for two weeks. We would have to lock it in.
Okay.
The question for staffing is, once we have those survey results, that will better drive the staffing needs. I would recommend if the survey is released tomorrow, we give the parents to the end of the day Friday to respond. It's going to be a tight turnaround.
Thank you.
As a plan already.
I did cut you off, Michelle, and I want to come back to you first and allow you to finish, because I felt that that was an important question, so along with what you were saying. Are you, are you finished with what you were asking?
Yes, for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Husak.
Yeah, I just, I guess I, if we already have a survey and we're already working ahead, that means we already have a plan and wouldn't we have been working on a plan to get these kids back months ago? So I'm not, I understand what everybody's saying about a rolled out approach here, but I mean, you put a rolled out approach and we're going to, we're going to be at the end of April. You might as well keep them home. So, you know, I just, I have to question what we're doing here, guys. Like, is it, are we coming back or not? And it sounds like there's a plan already talked about and it's been kind of formulated and administration has been hearing that this might happen. So is there a plan already kind of started and drafted?
But that also includes, that also includes the need for a survey. Anyway, just, we don't have the numbers. We don't have the numbers of how many kids are going to come back virtually.
Mr. Fedorcha, I understand, but at some point, we're always going to have a what-if. There's going to be a what-if, a snowstorm comes tomorrow, or what if we don't have power, or what if something comes after a COVID pandemic? We have had flu vaccine or the flu in our buildings for years. So we had a plan then, we have a plan now.
And we do have a survey. We just took a survey, didn't we?
Not.
Less than half of the students, parents and guardians responded to that survey.
Oh, I see.
So the projections that we have now would be to, you know, what we did was extrapolate those responses up based on a percentage of what it would be if all parents responded. We would have to send out a survey. We would need to give the parents time to respond to that. I'm saying we do a condensed schedule, have them respond by the end of the day Friday. We would then use that information to drive the logistics of what it's actually going to look like, i.e. the rest of the plan, knowing now that we have solid numbers. A staged approach would look like this. If the survey were to go out tomorrow, we have a board meeting on Monday, a traditional school board meeting. The 15th would be the earliest that students would start to come back. The 22nd of March would be Slatington. If the board were to decide to do the middle school and high school, the following week at the same time, that's the 29th, we're still in March. And the fourth quarter begins on April 6th.
Mr. Link, it's Donna Culp. You talked about another, hi, you talked about another survey to parents. Is, were you planning on using the connect ed or emails? Or how were you going to do that survey? I'm just wondering if there's a way that they can respond back sooner, if there's a quick way to get the question to them. And that way, we could plan sooner and get kids back sooner, because we're, like you said, we're almost at the end of March till we get the middle or high school back. And I really think we have to get the Peters kids back as soon as we can. That's my perspective.
Sure. So we've already talked about that. If we were to do that, we would release, we would still do it online, virtual, because we do have parents that prefer to exchange information that way. So another one of the online surveys. We've already actually started talking about, we could just literally send home a backpack-stuffer survey with the younger children as well, a paper survey.
But we're still talking two weeks, though, then, to start us, what you're saying?
Two weeks to implement.
Could we do it 10 days instead of two weeks? I just don't understand.
I'm strongly urging the board to give us two weeks to get the survey results back and then put the logistics into place to start the students on, if it were to be Peters, it would be March 15th.
I think, I think we're hearing you, Matt, saying you want two weeks. And I get it, and I think the board gets it. And I want to go back to what Michelle, Michelle was saying about, you know, one of our plans, how we got to implement this, and go back to the motion that Bob and Bob made to bring the kids back, the students back four to five days a week. And I know I suggested a special meeting to approve the plans, but, but I think I want to move ahead with this. We've kicked this can up and down the road now. And if I can, a kind of amend Bob's motion and say, we're going to return all students for a four-day-a-week class. The administration will come back with a plan that we can discuss at our next regularly scheduled board meeting next Monday. And if there's any reason why we can't do it, we can call a special meeting the following Monday. If not, we proceed with the plan that will give you two weeks to put it in place. If any problems develop, we can discuss that either at next week's meeting or at a special meeting, and we can proceed with their, bring the students back to school in a safe and sound and sensible manner. So if, that's my amendment to the motion.
Mr. Green, can I ask a point of clarification? This is Mrs. Martino. Point of clarification. By plan, do you mean everybody back all at once or this phased approach? You know, we're still looking at these bullet points, so I was wondering.
I think, Michelle, we could look at that next week. I don't, I don't want to do like Peters one week and then Slatington the next week, and then the middle school the next week and the high school the following week. That doesn't work for me. I could see gradually bringing them back, but maybe in the plan, I'd like to see it might be maybe Peters and the middle school that week, and then the junior or the middle school, which one did I miss? The high school and Slatington the following week. But, you know, I don't want to wait four weeks to bring the students back. That's not, that's not what I would like to envision in the plan. I would like to see something quicker than that. And I don't know if that's what Matt was talking about or not, again, because we haven't seen that fleshed out plan that he was talking about.
So just vote on asking for a plan?
Matt, you're muted.
Green, you're muted.
Mr. Green, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's what I was saying. A plan available for us to review and adopt next week with the thought that we will be moving forward unless there's some serious reason why we can't. And if that's the case, we can have a special meeting the next Monday to discuss that and work out any little glitches. And I hope that's acceptable to Matt, and I hope that's acceptable to the board, to parents and the teachers.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Green, I have a question on that.
Okay, yeah. Mrs. Heckman, wait, and then after you, Mr. Link, though, Mrs. Heckman did have her mic on, so when you're finished, I will refer to her then.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Heckman. I apologize, I didn't see that you were unmuted there.
No, Mr. Link.
Administration, to be able to develop that plan, would need direction this evening, probably from a very succinct motion that's voted on as to whether it's all back at once or to phase it. Because that will be a driver in the plan. So I would request, if you're going to make a motion tonight, there's clarity as to whether it's all at once or to phase it, let that be voted on, and then that will give us direction. Again, I'm recommending on behalf of administration that it's phased.
I think I was saying I could accept phase-in, but I don't want a four-week phase-in. I would like to see a two-and-two type phase-in. I don't want to wait four more weeks to have the students come back to school. I want to see it happen before that.
Mrs. Heckman, you were.
So Mr. Link kind of beat me to the punch because my question was going to be, if we are coming back to talk about a plan, is this a plan for everybody at the same time? Or is this a phase-in plan? Or is this like a three and then one? What is the, what is the plan that we're actually working on? Because I didn't know what, I still don't know what it is. So are we still talking about a plan to do everyone at the same time? Is that feasible? Is it, you know, Slatington and Peters in two weeks for them to organize? You know, they start 2.5 or three weeks away? Do they start two weeks away from this week that we're in, this Monday? You know, and then is it one week after that that middle school and high school go? Or is it actually two weeks after that? Because they're working so hard on Slatington and Peters, they need two more weeks to then figure out high school and middle school. So I just, my question is kind of Mr. Link's question.
Matt, could you give us language to amend my motion? I agree with Mr. Green, and I understand what Michelle's talking about. But if we did a phase-in, four days a week, like I said before, but it takes us two weeks instead of four weeks, that would, I think, answer the questions.
So I'm going to give you, I guess, probably two options. One, to vote on a motion that students in Peters Elementary School have a choice to return four days a week on March 15th. Slatington return on March 22nd. The middle school and high school return on March 29th. Four days a week. Or students in Peters and Slatington return on March 15th. And students at the middle school and high school return on March 22nd, four days a week. We will, that will then help us release the surveys out tomorrow. What I would recommend is, you know, we would, however you want to bring back the elementary configuration, however you want to vote on that. We've talked about this, and I would recommend that we send out just a survey to the elementary parents. We've talked about this and I would recommend that we send out just a survey to the elementary parents. And then probably towards the end of that week, send out the survey to the secondary parents.
I like your second option.
Thank you. Uh, if one of the board members wants to, to kind of move that as an option, you know, I'll look to Mr. Fedorcha on direction on that.
We have a motion on the table right now. Uh, I also, so, Mr. Mr. Keegan, I mean, I, I, do you want to?
I make the motion like we just.
Do you want to, do you want to withdraw your first motion?
Draw with my first, first motion.
Okay, and your second.
Motion with the second option that Mr. Link put out and we need.
Do just for parliamentary procedure.
Pardon? Okay, you, you're going to remove, you're, you're withdrawing your motion. And do I, is, is your second or agreeing to that? Miss Mr. Kern. Is he still here?
Yes, yes.
Do you, do you agree to withdraw the motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now, Mr. Keegan, will you make your motion?
We're going to, uh, bring our students back. A four-day-a-week program, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, virtual, Thursday, Friday is in, in-house. And the option, uh, it, it'll be a phased-in option as described by Mr. Link. You know what the second option you said?
That would be Peters and Sladington on March fifteenth. And the high school and middle school on March twenty-second. For those families that choose to have their children come back four days a week.
That's it.
Okay, that's the motion? Am I correct, Mr. Keegan?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second, Mr. Kern?
Bob Kern will second it.
Okay, any discussion on the motion that's there? Mrs. Heckman.
Thank you. Um, as part of the plan, that, well, I'm assuming that next Monday we're not going, are we going to have an update on this plan next Monday? Like more?
I can give you an update on the progress through the plan. By that time, we should certainly have the survey results uh, for the elementary buildings at that point. And then a discussion on what, uh, spacing will look like in the schools and as well as how it may impact the other instructional models, be that, uh, virtual instruction or Bulldog Academy.
Okay, thank you. That was where I was going. Um, update on what it looks like for currently virtual people, um, how it could affect custodial staff and cleaning. And if we need to put more resources into that, how many teachers need to be acquired, new teachers need to be brought into each building. You know, what type of resources do we have to allocate to that? All of those things are obviously things that I'm thinking about, so.
Any other discussion on the motion, on the motion?
I respectfully disagree. Administration's job will handle that. And when we start asking those intimate questions about every action that he's going to do, then we're micromanaging. And I don't want to micromanage our administration. I have every faith that Matthew and the team can come to us with a plan that's going to work for all students and families. So I, I, that's where I disagree with you, Michelle, but it, it's not, I'm not being negative about it. I'm just like, we need to let them get the plan and, and that it'll serve all kids and families. That's all I got to say.
Okay, Mrs. Huzak, you had a question?
I just wanted to clarify one thing that students will still have the option. If there is a family member or a student that does not feel comfortable coming back into the building and they want to continue virtual, this plan will still include to allow the virtual approach for those children that want to do that.
We will have an option for them. I'm publicly stating right now, it may not be as robust as what they currently have in front of them. But we will have an option for them, um, virtually.
May I just ask what that means? Uh, and I'm assuming I know what that means, which it would mean that with the current element or the elementary particularly, I'm looking at Peters is over. Those virtual teachers may not have a virtual class anymore. All those virtual students would then be distributed among the other teachers. So that would be a tremendous change to the virtual learning of those students that are currently being taught every day by a virtual teacher. Am I correct, Mr. Link?
That is a strong possibility that what you just described, that those students, so we would have to use a dedicated virtual teacher as a, an in-person classroom teacher to lower the numbers of students in the classrooms, which then means they kind of highly, high-quality produced recordings that students have at night, we would have to take off the table because those teachers would be engaged in teaching. Um, and they may just have to then watch a recording of the, of the instruction in a class, either, either log on real time or watch a recording of, of instruction that occurred in a classroom, which is not going to be as polished as our elementary teachers have been doing with those videos that they record, um, which I think are just phenomenal. Uh, so there is an example of how it may change.
I guess, Mr. Link, my, my question would be, you know, if we, if we are talking about equality in, in the education of students, why would the virtual be getting something different than the hybrid students in my mind? So if I'm looking at that now, I'm not sure that we're providing equal opportunity for those students. Because if, if the virtual model currently today is doing something different than those students who are in hybrid, why can't they all just follow what the hybrid's doing? And the choice becomes either you're in class or you're hybrid and the video gets recorded from the teachers teaching anyway. Why are they getting something polished?
I'm not sure what you mean.
At the K one-two level, we found that the children and their families oftentimes when they're home to support them during the evening, um, our, our virtual teachers have been able to record kind of, here's what you need to know in fifteen to twenty minutes, instead of them having to watch through maybe an entire instructional period of the live streaming recording. Um, so we were doing that for those families as well. Uh, I don't know currently how we could continue to do that. If those virtual teachers or the classroom teachers that may have been recording those at-night videos are now doing live instruction, um, throughout the day.
Any other questions? Any other questions? We do have a motion on the table. If I haven't, oh, excuse me, if I have no other questions, I will now call for the vote. Madam Secretary, we are voting on the motion that is on the table right now.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Huzak? Yes. Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Ms. Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Gissler?
Yes.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Link. Well, you, you have, uh, a motion on the table and it's been passed and you can now meet with your administrators to prepare whatever we need to have prepared so that we can open schools safely within, uh, the timeframe that has been established.
Thank you, Mr. Fedorcha and members of the board.
Okay. Are there any other items of business that the board would like to discuss? Seeing none, I will ask if there are any guests who wants to address the board?
I had, did fill out the form to be able to make a comment at the end of the meeting. Is this the end of the meeting?
This is the end of the meeting, just before we adjourn, sir.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mr. Weber, I'm going to ask that we follow the pattern that we did at the beginning and have Mr., um, Mr. Hill go down the list in order like we did the last time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I was assuming there's nobody else, but yes. Mr. Hill, are there any other people who would like to, uh, as guests for the?
Uh, yeah, we'll have to go through the list again. I'm not sure who's still on.
No, I'm, the, the entire list? No. Is there anybody? Is there anybody who wants to speak at this time?
Mr. Mr. Fedorcha, if you recall, when we sent the, um, registration link out, the choices were for the people to speak at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting or both. So now we're at the end of the meeting. So I would, I would say that we just go down that list again.
Okay. I mean, I didn't realize we were going to have to do that. That's my fault. I, I assumed that if people wanted to speak again, they would have, uh, made that comment, um, or whatever. Mr. Mr. Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, let's see who's on. Justin Jakowitz, I don't think he's on any longer. He's still on, Justin Jakowitz?
Yeah, I did put for comment at the end of the meeting, but I will, uh, just say thank, thank you to all the board members. I think, uh, very productive meeting. Uh, like I said, it was long overdue. A lot of you guys said the same thing. Um, so I'm very appreciative, you know, for the opportunity to be able to speak. And I think you guys are doing the right thing by, uh, trying to get the kids back in school. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Jakowitz. Mr. Hill?
Melanie Natamaker. I do not think she's on any longer. She's not on. Pauline Grady. She's not on any longer. Um, Mark Bentz. If you would like to make a comment, unmute your microphone, please. Okay, we'll move to the next one. Eric King. If you would like to make a comment?
He has no further comment.
Thank you. Hey, Tim Weber?
Again, I, I am, um, James, you're not muted.
Sorry, thank you.
I, again, I'm speaking as the Northern Lehigh Education Association President. I will tell you that the association is very disappointed with your decision. You've forgotten the one group that really makes this work. In the end, the teachers. You've demonstrated that you're willing to take the risk with our teachers and our families' health and well-being. This decision is not acceptable to the teachers. There was a comment that a spouse's wife is an essential worker, has been working through this. I'm sure that spouse has already gotten the vaccination. We have not had the opportunity to all get vaccinated. In fact, some of the teachers are working very hard and are in the process of doing that. I'm one of them. Additionally, teachers have taken on the huge task of taking on mobile teaching models. This is a huge task. And now you're asking them to change that again. This is not the right time. I want to ask you again to please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Uh, Mr. Hill?
Uh, Pauline Grady, I saw Pauline just joined. Pauline, unmute if you want to make a comment, please.
I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my phone wasn't working properly. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for listening to the parents. Um, we do appreciate your time. You know, it's been rough for all of us, um, kids, the board, administration, the teachers. Um, but the biggest concern here are the, are the kids and that's the bottom line. But, um, we do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Mr. Hill?
Uh, yes, Kim Bentz. I believe Kim left the meeting. Let me just double check. Yes, Kim left the meeting. Ariel Sly, please unmute if you want to make a comment.
I just wanted to, um, also say thank you to everybody who was here tonight. I know it was a very long meeting. Um, and I appreciate everyone's time and listening to us parents and voicing our opinions to stick up for our children's education and trying to get them back to school. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Tara Williams. Believe Tara left the meeting as well. Uh, Kadia Bender?
Um, I don't really have anything else to say except for, um, thank you all for your time. And thank you for providing this option to parents from all ends of the opinion spectrum. This was a much more effective way of having our voices heard than two hundred characters and we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, Christopher Barnes, he left the meeting. Uh, he was on YouTube and said he's no longer in the meeting and he yields his time. Uh, Allison Crucial, I saw she left the meeting earlier. I don't know if she came back. Yeah, Allison, looks like she left the meeting. Uh, Susan Bachman?
No comment.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, Richard Roberts?
Uh, yeah, and, and first I want to say I'm not surprised, but a little disappointed, um, in this because of the fear that I thought was going to happen. You know, congratulations for everyone that's, that is getting what they want. But now at the same time, my, my son and his classmates are potentially now in the middle of March being forced to, to forget about their rapport with their virtual teacher and, and their schedule and the way everything's been going. And now all of a sudden be put into a new classroom with new students and I, I don't think that's fair. Um, so I'm hoping with this plan, you guys can figure out a way to allow the virtual world to stay the virtual world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Royer, I believe Heather left the meeting. Just a quick double check here. Yes, Heather, Heather left the meeting. Uh, Jennifer Arnold. Jennifer, I believe, has left the meeting as well. And the last one is Tracy Eddinger. Tracy, do you want to make a final comment?
Um, yes, I would. Um, I understand that this is a huge undertaking and there are a great number of considerations that need to be made for the safety of all, both students and staff. Again, I've reiterated this many times. I'm, I'm concerned as are a great number of the staff members at Peters and all around the districts with the number of, uh, social distancing spacing. Again, uh, I, I just am curious what number is going to be acceptable as far as of spacing is concerned. Um, I, I, I was appreciative to hear that, uh, you're considering the addition of staffing. Um, but again, with the two-week timeline, um, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure what processes for interviewing and hiring and getting the necessary staff in, in place to do this in, in two weeks. So I just hope that as we plan this, um, you know, we take into consideration the, the spacing and safety for all involved.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Hill?
That was the last one on our list, Mr. Fedorcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, anyone? I will accept a motion to adjourn, but I want to thank you very much for your patience tonight. Uh, it has been a long meeting. We haven't done one of these in a long time. I, I, I know it's very difficult for all of us and I want to thank you very much for sitting in and listening and, and coming up with a resolution. We'll make our school district, uh, function in a well-mannered way. And I trust Mr. Link and, and our administration to do that. And I trust Mr. Link and, and our administration to do that. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
This is Mrs. Culp, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Mrs. Martino, second.
Go call.
Ms. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Huzak? Yes. Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Culp?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Gisler?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No, I just always wanted to do that. Okay, I'll change it to a yes, but.
Mr. Fedorcha?
Yes. Again, stay well and stay healthy, everybody, and, and stay safe. Uh, thank you again. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.